Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the West Orange Board of Education. Mr. Calavano?
All. Mr. Tralls. Mrs. Lab.
Present.
Mrs. Morikai.
Present.
Mr. Robertson.
Present.
Mrs. Swartzbaum.
Present.
Please stand for their pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Notice of meeting. Please take notice, adequate notice, that this meeting has been provided for in the following manner: That a written notice was sent from the Office of the Secretary of the Board at 4:00 PM on January 6, 2017. That said notice was sent by regular mail to the West Orange Township Clerk and the editors of the West Orange Chronicle and a Star Ledger. That said notice was posted in the Lobby Administration Building of the Board of Education.
Thank you, Mr. Calavano. May I have a motion for the closed and public meeting minutes of January 23rd?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion by the Board? Mr. Calavano?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Mr. Rutske.
Thank you. Okay, before we go out into the audience, I just want to explain everything that's going to take place. So, we're very fortunate tonight to have the Mount Pleasant students with us, as well as the St. Cloud students. We will follow the St. Cloud students with a steam tank presentation done by Mr. Gersio and students from the high school where they went down and competed in Atlantic City. Following that, we will recognize our marching band, and they're not here tonight because they would have every single seat taken. There's a hundred of them. So they are now relaxing in the band room, and Ms. Legata is going to get them for us when the steam tank presentation is done. They are then going to come in and they're going to stand in front of where the Board sits, facing obviously the audience, and we will recognize the amazing accomplishments that the band has so far this year. Then we're going to have a presentation by two gentlemen for our special education audit. For those that may not know, we are doing a comprehensive audit of our K-12 special ed program and department, and we have done extensive work to find the right company to do that audit. That will be the fifth presentation of the night, and then we will allow the Board to ask the two gentlemen from the special ed audit questions, and then we'll open it up to the public at that point to also ask questions, and that way they don't have to stay here until midnight. They'll have the opportunity to get on the road and get back to where they need to go. Then we'll come back, and the Board will come back up here, and we will do a few other items, and then we'll move into the agenda. So there's a lot to go through tonight, but I wanted everybody in the room. Now, those parents that are here, obviously, when your child is done performing, you are more than welcome to stay, but obviously you don't have to as well if you want to go with your kids and go home. And we thank you for being here tonight. It's very nice for everybody to come out. So with that, if I could ask Mr. Giacomo to come up. She's going to take care of the Mount Pleasant presentation, and ask the Board members to please step into the audience. There are seats reserved for you. Mr. Giacomo, all you need to do is introduce your teachers and talk a little bit about the program and what the kids are talking about tonight. Please.
Okay, so last year, we at Mount Pleasant were recognized at...it actually was a surprise by a public review as being one of the most diverse schools in the country. And we were so excited about that. We knew we had a diverse school. We just didn't realize that only ten schools were selected, and we were one of the ten. And that's high schools, elementary schools, all across New Jersey. And with that, we had this big assembly, and we wanted to celebrate our diversity. And Ms. Ferrara, the 5th grade ELA teacher, actually came to me at the beginning of the year, and she said, "I want to embrace this program, this global read aloud program." And it's actually a program where everybody around the world reads the same book if you're involved in the program. And I said, "This is incredible. We have to do it." With departmentalization, as you know, in West Orange in 5th grade, it's new, and we were a little nervous about that, but we thought about how could we creatively make this happen? And the social studies 5th grade teacher, Teresa Galati, decided to take the reading portion of it into her class, so it became a team effort, and it was truly collaborative. And the teachers designed a little video tonight to show you a little bit more about the program, and then some of our 5th graders decided to come out and talk a little bit about their feelings about the program. Needless to say, it was a huge success. So at this time, I'd like to show the video so you can get a little more insight about what we were doing, and then really turn it over to our students, because they're super excited to be here, and it is about them. So, thank you so much.
We hope that you enjoyed our video. Now we'd like to share some of what we learned in our favorite experiences from PAX and the Global Read Aloud.
The greatest lesson I learned in PAX is sometimes you have to let go of what you love for the greater good.
After reading the book PAX, I learned that if you love someone or something, sacrificing is the right thing to do.
The book PAX is very inspiring. There were many quotes and lessons learned. One of the lessons were the idea of "two but not two," that to me this means that we are all one, even though we might look different or believe in different things. We are more alike than we know. We are two but not two.
The PAX Peace Project was a project started at Mount Pleasant that was inspired by PAX. We were discussing symbolism and how objects can often mean something to us. We found an object that represented peace to us, wrote about it, and shared our lessons about peace with our classmates.
We shared peace by asking younger students what they could do to spread peace and encourage them to be kind to one another.
The Global Read Aloud was a huge collaboration across the world. Everyone a part of it read a book and shared their thoughts, perspective, and ideas on it. We read PAX, and it was honestly awesome. We did many things on it, and I'm positive other schools have done so too. I'm so thankful I had this experience within mine.
My favorite part of the Global Read Aloud was getting to collaborate with other schools. We were able to see their perspective on the book, and we got to see what ideas they had. We got to ask and answer questions through a Google Hangout. We also started a chat on Twitter where we would ask questions about our reading.
My favorite part of the Global Read Aloud was getting to express my thoughts on PAX with people that I've never even met before. The great thing was that they understood me because they were reading the same book.
My favorite part about the Global Read Aloud was how we got to share ideas with other students. We learned new things and grew as readers during this experience.
I would absolutely recommend that other students participate in the Global Read Aloud. The Global Read Aloud was an amazing experience because our class got a chance to collaborate with students in other countries as far as Singapore and schools as close to ours as Kelly Elementary. We shared our thoughts, questions, and wonders about PAX.
I'd like to just say that we are really proud of our work and hope to continue next year with another Global Read Aloud because it was so successful. Boys and girls, you did an amazing job. I'd like to thank my three 5th grade teachers that are here. Again, Ms. Ferrara, who put the video together, ELA, and Ms. Galati, Social Studies, and Ms. Lombardi, our math teacher. Great job, everyone.
Thank you. If you could just stay for a few more minutes. If you have to go, I understand, but St. Cloud is now going to present, and I would love to have the same audience for St. Cloud that we did for the students, teachers, and Mr. Giacomo. Thank you very much, ladies. Thank you so much. Great work on this. Really wonderful. Mr. Price, if you can have your students come up, please.
On behalf of the faculty, staff, students, and all their families, we want to thank the Board of Education and Superintendent Mr. Rutske for inviting us here this evening. The kids are really, really excited. We have a reinvigorated art program under Mrs. Lori Howe, who is a Mount Pleasant kindergarten teacher for ten years. Many of the year children she taught, she's really brought all those great talents to our art program. The kids tonight are going to be presenting on one of the units they completed. They are six stellar art students from St. Cloud. They represent two from each one of our classes. Each one of the units looks at a particular artist, looks at the particular movement that that artist was a part of, and then looks to identify which elements of art were utilized during that period to create the wonders that we have before us. So without further ado, I'm going to begin with our students, who will tell you a bit about the artist, a bit about the artistic movement, and also about the elements they utilize to create this beautiful works of art they have.
Vincent van Gogh was born March 30th, 1853, in Holland. He had three sisters and two brothers.
Vincent van Gogh didn't start painting until he was at the age of 27. He created over 900 paintings.
He made 1,100 drawings in only ten years before his tragic death in July 29th, 1890. He was only 37.
Van Gogh only sold one painting in his entire life. It was to his uncle.
Van Gogh started the art movement Expressionism. Expressionism is when an artist makes a piece lightly distorted to show an emotion.
Lots of Van Gogh's work uses line and color to create emotion. We use different lines to show different emotions.
Great job, you guys. Beautiful work. Thanks again, Board of Education, for having us here. Mr. Rutske, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Thank you, boys and girls. For the parents who have the elementary students, you are welcome, obviously, to stay. If you have to go, we completely understand. We're just going to transition for a moment to Mr. Del Gersio and to the presentation. Mr. Del Gersio, you want to come up and go ahead and help us? Thank you very much for coming tonight, everybody. Okay, we're going to continue on with our program tonight. We are now going to be moving to Mr. Del Gersio and the presentation. I see Mr. Grossman is here with him. Gentlemen, let me turn it over to you. Please.
Good evening. My name is Ryan Del Gersio. I'm the supervisor of the Technology and Engineering Department here at West Orange High School. Tonight, you're going to see two student group presentations. These students were enrolled in our Engineering and Design Solutions course last year. Part of that course curriculum, they had to come up with a solution to a real-world problem. They had to design and prototype. The students had very good solutions, very good invention ideas, so with that, they submitted their ideas to what's called the Steam Tank Competition. They were chosen as finalists to participate in a steam tank competition in Atlantic City this past October. The students did a phenomenal job presenting in Atlantic City. It wasn't easy. Steam Tank, as you know, is a spinoff of the Real Shark Tank, except it's not just businessmen and entrepreneurs, it's actually industrial engineers and chemical engineers from the US Army. So they were grilled by these engineers as part of the question and answer session, but they were very well-prepared. All the teachers in our department did a wonderful job with preparing them, and they really showed their content knowledge of their product with their detailed answers and their thorough presentation. So we're going to start off first with the Rygen with Kevin Zelikson and his brother Brett Zelikson.
All right, hello, everyone. All right, so I'm Kevin Zelikson. I'm a senior here at West Orange High School, and my brother Brett is a freshman. The last couple of years, I was taking engineering courses here at the high school, and I'm looking to apply. And I'm applying...I have applied to colleges already, so I'm looking to hopefully be the mechanical engineer at some point.
I'm Brett Zelikson, and I'm a freshman at West Orange High School, and I'm also interested in engineering.
All right, so we are doing the Rygen Sustainable Cycle. Our motto is "Roll for a mile, juice for a while." So a little bit about our bikes. So, we were thinking about a problem, and we thought that an initial problem would be that in everyday life, we have people trying to commute every day, and we wanted to find a clean way in which they could commute without using a car, so we thought, "Might as well use a bike." And we also thought that people needed to charge their phones as well. So we also thought, maybe we can make...design something that can converge both of those ideas into one, in which we can charge a phone or anything that uses a USB while riding your bike. So our opportunity...so we were looking at mainly New York City, because that's a big...because there's not too many people that live there that use cars all the time. It's mainly walking traffic, or they use their bike...or they use a bike. The main thing they use is like city bikes, and there's over 400,000 trips done every day with 6,000 bikes around...with, I mean, 603 stations with 6,000 bikes around New York City. So we thought this is a pretty good market to go into, and there's...and if you go around New York City, you always see that there's a lot of those bikes that are being...that usually these bike stations are not really full, and there's plenty of market to expand there. So we were like...so we thought that maybe if we threw our bikes that could charge their phones, it would encourage people to ride their bikes instead of trying to get attacked or whatever, and encourage a more clean way of transportation. So, through our decider process, we developed our Rygen bike, which uses a power pack that generates power when you ride the bike. So these are sketches we did in the Rhino software. So this is just all three. That's our perspective view. It's front view. It's top view. Side view.
So, the market that we wanted to expand into was the home market, which would give access to anybody with a bike so they could charge their phone. College campuses, because college students are always on their phone, and they want to get around their campus efficiently, and we want to partner with City Bike in New York City, so everybody that's commuting will be able to use the product. The average retail cost of a standard bicycle is around $500, and the cost to manufacture our bicycle would be about $325. So the retail cost would be about $750 for our sustainable cycle, but we would be able to make that money back eventually, because you wouldn't have to spend money on charging your phone, and it would lower your electricity bills.
All right, so we consulted a couple of experts in the field. So when I was originally designing this, we were trying to figure out a way to get the bike to charge on a battery system that we originally thought would be a lithium-ion battery, but we found that lithium-ion batteries can't charge with an infrequent current, since when you ride your bike, you're not putting the same amount of constant current going into the bike. So since you're having a varied current going in, the lithium-ion battery can't really charge to that, so we decided that we needed to change our battery to a nickel metal hydride battery, which can take that...change the varying current going into the battery. Also, it can work in different temperatures, which was also a plus. We also talked to Isaiah Collin from Evco Mechanical, who really liked our bike and thought that it would do well in the market. So our future improvements for our bike would be...well, right now, we have the power pack, as you can see here, and it's kind of attached on the outside of the bike with the USB port here. So we were hoping to maybe get it into the main frame of the bike. So, in addition to...well, if I didn't...I probably didn't explain it before, but how the bike works is when you ride your bike, you're spinning the wheels, and it spins the gears in this box here, in our gearbox, which generates current using the motor in there, which then would travel up through this wire into the power pack and charge the battery that way. So we were thinking of putting...we were hoping to put the battery and the USB port inside the actual frame of the bike, and also have like a cover over it, so we can make it waterproof in the end, and have it so it can actually be a city bike and withstand the weather outside. We also wanted to...we also wanted to figure out a way to...since these docks were the city bikes, everyone docks their bike at the end, maybe there was a way to drain the power off these...off the batteries from the energy that they've created and store it in a bigger battery for later uses for the city or whatever that people can use. Also, we would like to possibly expand our market. So, we would like to thank our Graphic Communications Department for making us these t-shirts and our logo, and...well, we had music for the original PowerPoint, so thank you to that. And this is our website. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. I'm Matthew Hassick. I'm a senior with Paula Rojas. We were in class with Kevin last year. I breed fish at home. I have about 21 tanks. I've kept over 100 different species of fish and bred over 30s fish invertebrates and Our problem is there's no aquarium filter on the market that has the capability to adjust sizes and flow rate for any aquarium. When you buy fish, you oftentimes buy them small, and they outgrow the tank you buy them. And upgrading a tank is most often expensive because of the price of a new filter, because you can buy most other parts used on Craigslist or eBay or even the dollar per gallon sale at Petco once a year. And oftentimes, people get rid of their fish because of the cost to upgrade this tank. Our solution was to design a prototype and aquarium filter that can expand to any size aquarium and meet the needs of any owner. Our filter, the EX700, can accommodate tanks from 20 to 150 gallons an hour, 150 gallons, and flow rates from 0 to 700 gallons an hour. This is the first fully expendable canister filter and power filter that offers complete control over the flow in an aquarium, and like I said, can accommodate aquariums from 20 to 150 gallons and flow rates from 0 to 700. We created an expansion that slots in between the lid and the bottom of the filter to allow more capacity to store media, which actually filters the water in your aquarium. It's not the filter itself. And we moved the pump outside instead of in the top of the filter to allow you to have control over it and easily replace it and clean it if it gets clogged or damaged. The filter on the left is a traditional canister filter. This is actually the Marineland brand, and you can find this at most big-box stores. As you see, you have an input and output on the top of the filter. You have an impeller on the top left and a chamber in the rest of the filter to store the media. Our filter on the right has the pump located outside with a slot that expands in the middle to hold the media, and those orange trays that hold the media inside of it. And if you ever need to increase the size of your flow, you turn the valve on the pump, which increases or decreases the flow, and you add another expansion with the orange trays to hold more media. We designed our filter using the Rhino software and 3D-printed it using the Ultimaker 3D printer with ABS Plastics. ABS Plastic has a higher resistance to water than PLA, and we intend to use injection molding for mass production of the filter for cost and ease of use.
Hello. So I am the CFO of the company, and I work with the business aspect of the company. I've taken various engineering courses, business courses, and math and science courses in the school. These prices are...whoa, I'm sorry. These prices were based on 1,000 products, so 1,000 filters and 1,000 modules. These prices include our molds and other prices like our packaging. So our retail price is $100, and our profit would be $71.51, so that would make a markup of 249.77% for our filter. And for our modules, that would be a retail price for $25 and a profit of $13 with a markup of 118%. Our marketability...our marketing strategy is to retail local stores and clubs and online, meaning that we would go internationally... meaning that we would go internationally as soon as possible. North Jersey is a great area for this because it is home to one of the largest and oldest aquarium clubs, as Matthew has stated, and many high-end stores with world-renowned owners. We also intend to take out ads in Amazonas and tropical fish hobbies. Our target market is all fish owners in New Jersey and as our market expands, obviously, around the world. This ranges from the average family who owns a goldfish in a ten gallon tank to people like Matthew who own too many tanks. So, yeah.
All right, the main competition for our filter is the Fuvol 306. It's one of the most popular filters on the market in the world. Its flow rate is three hundred and three gallons per hour, holds media of six point six liters, and it's recommended for tank sizes around seventy gallons and sells for most stores in our area for a hundred fifty dollars. Our filter, the EX-700, has a flow rate from zero to seven hundred gallons an hour, media capacity of eight point four liters and a recommended tank size of twenty to seventy gallons without a module, which is our base model for a hundred dollars, seventy to a hundred and ten gallons with one expansion and a hundred ten to a hundred fifty gallons with two expansions. And again, the module is twenty-five dollars each, so one twenty-five and one fifty for the two other sizes. We contacted Absolive Fish, which is located in Clifton, New Jersey. They're a world-renowned store. The owner, Patrick Donston, is an amazing person. He really knows what he's doing. Their top-selling brand is this Fuvol filter and they retail it between one fifty and two hundred dollars. And we talked to them about what they look for in a product before they bring it into their store because these are the stores that we want to target and sell in. They look for quality, price, reliability and ease of access to replacement parts. We can meet or beat Fuvol on all of these. We have a lower price. We're made of the same quality and because of the location of the pump, it makes it easier to find replacement parts and it's easier to clean and repair the filter, which helps with the reliability and is less likely to break and crack. We also contacted Rachel O'Leary, who owns invertebrates by Miss Jinxed. She's a world leader in nano fish and hillstream loaches and sells tons of invertebrates on her website. She recommends purchasing a filter with versatility and media options because not everyone's tank has the same needs. Quality of the make, options for intake and output, depending on what fish you need to keep. Sometimes you need to lower flow rate or higher, more distributed flow rate. Other fish you need a high flow rate with a low concentration to blast it like a stream. Ease of maintenance and versatility of applications. No, in no way does any filter compete with us in terms of versatility. The ability to move the pump and have that expansion and increase the flow rate and decreases flow rate allows you to use it for almost anything. A lot of people like Rachel O'Leary, who keep hillstream loaches, add a canister filter like this and then build a PVC pump into the bottom of their tank and cover it with sand so they can create a hillstream loach environment, which is a clear water stream in Japan. And they can pump up twelve hundred gallons an hour and blast it in one direction of the tank so the fish get enough oxygen because other canister filters can't go up that high. Ours can replace that with just one thing. I mean, that's hours and hours to go into making this and making it fit into your tank. It's very costly. You have to get pumps to work. And once it's in there, it's really easy to get sand or debris stuck in that pump and cracks down and needs frequent replacement. There are tons of environmental implications with, in the aquarium hobby, and it comes under fire a lot. Our packaging would be a hundred percent recycled cardboard. And one of the biggest issues right now is invasive and exotic species. You see it all the time, especially in southern states like Florida and Georgia or even Minnesota. I think they caught something like a two-foot-long goldfish in one of their lakes. You have crazy stuff like this happening. It's because people's fish outgrow their tank and they can't get rid of them because people need huge tanks to keep them. You look at it and once you get into large tanks like a hundred fifty gallons, you're looking at filters that can retail over six hundred dollars. And even if you get your tank used and cheap, people can't afford that and they get rid of their fish and you get, release diseases into the wild. You release different species of algae and bacterias, other fish, and they outgrow there. They eat, they eat fish. They have no natural predators and they wreak havoc on the ecosystems. Having a filter that can increase to the size of the tank and decrease the cost of keeping your fish is a huge thing with keeping fish like goldfish that just outgrow any size tank you put them in and the tanks you buy them in and keep them out of the wild. We designed our logo on Adobe Illustrator and our design department in our school printed our shirts as well as our packaging and came up with that design. We're grateful for them. And our intro beats were designed by Justin Davis and Michael Osuji and a shout out to them for helping us with that. Just to sum everything up, the EX-700 is the first of its kind in the aquarium industry. No other expendable canister filter has hit the market and little change has been made in the filtration industry for the past hundred years. I know people have filters that are seventy years old, so nothing's changed. This is going to really revolutionize this. Customers and future hobbyists will no longer be lost due to the cost of upgrading and keeping their aquariums. All right, well, well, we just want to stay where we are on this. Right now, we're pursuing a patent on this. We've gotten an estimation of about five thousand dollars from Gearheart Law. To help offset that cost, we started making and designing acrylic aquarium dividers. We started selling them on Facebook. We have a couple interests from some farms out in Thailand and Canada that want to purchase it. So we're hoping to raise some money. We have some other ideas in mind that we can make ourselves to start raising money and get this off the ground. Anyone have any questions?
Thank you.
I just want to thank the board and Superintendent Mr. Rutzke for letting our students present tonight and being extremely, extremely supportive of the Technology and Engineering Department at the high school. We thank you very much. When Matt did his presentation in Atlantic City, he actually had a real aquarium with real fish there. So that was interesting with the filter. And we had these plaques for the other students who participated. These plaques are on display in the Conforti Lobby next to our tech ed display. Thank you.
I just want to thank the principals and the teachers and the kids who came out. Can you just give them one round of applause, please? Very impressive. Very impressive. Lot of great stuff going on. You see two elementary schools and the fine work they're doing. And then you see how it's transferring up to the high school and the great work that's going on in the engineering department. Really, really fine. Mr. Doug Ersho, Mr. Grossman, thank you very much. Gentlemen, thank you very much for tonight. As we move forward, this next group, the marching band, certainly does not need to be recognized. The accomplishments they've had are recognizable themselves. So what I want to do is just take a moment to read the accomplishments they've had so far this year. And then I'm going to introduce the, the four individuals who are part of this wonderful accomplishment. On September seventeenth in Scotch Plains, the high school competition. First place, Group Five A, best music, best visual, best overall effect, best percussion, best color guard. One week later in Roxbury, first place, Group Triple A, best music, best marching, best color guard. October first in Montville, first place, Group Five A, best music, best visual, best overall effect, best percussion, best color guard. Starting to hear a pattern, correct? October fifteenth, Verona, first place, Group Three, Group Triple A, best music, best visual, best overall effect, best percussion, best color guard. Also on the fifteenth, like we didn't have enough to just do one, we went to a second. The Yamaha Cup at MetLife Stadium, highest score in Group Five A, best overall effect. And October twenty-second, one week later, US Band New Jersey State Championships at Rutgers University. First place, Group Five A, best music, best visual, best overall effect. And November sixth, US Band National Championships at Crum Stadium, Allentown, Pennsylvania. First place, Group Five A, best music, best visual, best overall effect and best percussion. This is a national-recognized band who, if you have never heard, you are missing how terrific they actually are. They're going to the National Championships in Indianapolis in March. I will not take that thunder because I want to turn that over to the four individuals who are involved in this. So as I introduce them, if you could just hold your applause till all four are recognized. Our supervisor of fine arts, Mr. Luke Quagliato, Lou Kelly, Josh Zimmer and Aaron Legotic. If you could please come up, could you please help me recognize these wonderful individuals? Could I just have one of you come over here, all of you come over here, please? Thank you.
I'm going to take some liberty here and just kind of read as the kids are coming in just for the sake of time because there are, there's about a hundred of them here tonight. Not, maybe not all of them actually here because of other commitments, but first of all, it, we would be remiss if we didn't thank Mr. Rutzke and the Board of Education for all of their support. Music, not just marching band, but music in general is an investment. It takes a lot of time. It takes a lot of scheduling, things to happen right. It takes commitment of the district. It's not cheap. And, you know, West Orange is known for its support of the arts and we know that our, Mr. Rutzke and the board is going to continue that and for many, many years to come. I want to thank Mr. Moore for all of his support, obviously, the Director of Fine Arts. Fine and Performing Arts, new title, Mr. Quagliato. I'll still get used to your new title. It takes a village to get everything to happen. So not only is it just the administrators, but it's buildings and grounds. It's transportation. It's working with the athletic department to try and get everything to happen for these kids. The single most important group helping these kids are our music boosters. They not only support the band financially, but just in terms of manpower. We need stuff lugged here. We need trucks loaded there. It's a tremendous amount of work that our parents put in to help this group get to where it is. The staff, we have about a dozen staff members. Some of them you know as being teachers in the district, myself, Mrs. Legotic, Mr. Zimmer, Mr. Denberg, Mr. Tomlin, Ms. Ramel, many teachers in the district and a few from outside the district that help teach these guys. I don't do it myself, believe me. I want to thank our student leaders, Divya Anand and Jax Apilon and all the student leaders and all the students for all of their hard work. You don't know at the beginning of a season what's going to happen. You know, we just remarked, Band Camp 2017 is going to start six months from tonight, next season. And I was working on the music today at my desk. And you don't know how the season is going to turn out. You have, you have your hopes. You know it's, especially with our marching band, you know it's going to be a great group and you know they're going to work really hard and these kids really put in the extra effort this year and things kind of came together in the right way for everyone. And it's, it's a tribute to their hard work, tribute to their dedication and a tribute to their talent. Thank you.
Boys and girls, I just, ladies and gentlemen, not boys and girls anymore. I, I want to thank you on behalf of myself, the Board of Education and this entire district. You make us proud every single day, the work that you do, the, the way you represent us when you go out and compete. I hear all the time from different schools about what a classy group of young men and young lady you are, ladies you are. Obviously, with the coaches and the teachers who are working with you, expect that and, and that's what your families expect. So I just wanted to thank you. And I know tonight it's a lot to be here. Something that's really important to us is that we recognize individuals like yourself for the great work you do, not only with the band, but also in the classroom. And I know you're a phenomenal classroom as well. So thank you very much and all of you really appreciate the hard work. We know it's not easy to do the performances the way that you do them and to get the results that you get. It's very impressive and believe me, we thank you very much for that. Yeah, at this time, we're just going to take a two-minute break to get set up for our next presentation, which is the special education audit as well as our young men and young ladies as they exit out of the room. So feel free to stand up, stretch, and we'll get going in just a few minutes. Okay, we're going to continue on with our program. As we've been talking about for the last couple of months, one of our district goals and, and something that we need to evaluate is our special education department and all the components of the department. The special education audit started many, many months ago in determining what really is the priority in the district. And determining and working with the board, we decided that one of the goals needed to be evaluating the special ed department. In doing so, we went out and researched and interviewed many, many groups and individuals who have done special education audits before. We have looked at their scope of work and we have looked at the cost that they have charged and looked into their references based on the quality of the work that's been done. We narrowed that down to five groups. We brought those groups in, interviewed all of them, talked about the work that needed to be done in the district. And we have narrowed that down to one tonight. Steve Chicorello is here with us along with John. John is going to help us, both individuals, but they are both from EIRC. And we are very excited to have them as they have done this before. And one of the really nice components of EIRC is when you need follow-up professional development, they're one of the best in the state to provide it. So at this time, we're going to have Steve walk through the special ed audit scope of work. And, and as I said before, when he's done, then we're going to allow the board to come back up, ask them questions, and then we'll turn it over to the public to ask any questions we have. Gentlemen.
Good evening and I want to just take this opportunity to thank Superintendent Rutzke and his staff along with the board for providing us the opportunity to make this presentation tonight. I'd like to start off talking a little bit about EIRC. You may know who we are, you may not. A couple of things that I want to bring to your attention is that we have been around for forty-eight years, providing educational services throughout the state of New Jersey. We are considered to be an LEA in the eyes of the Department of Education. We do not receive any state funding, but that LEA status does allow us to work very easily with local school districts and other agencies through inter-local agreements. The major thing that we do, EIRC does a lot, but maybe the thing that we're best known for is providing professional development workshops, seminars, conferences for teachers and administrators across the state of New Jersey. We do that at our three locations. Our main location is on the Blackwood Campus of Camden County Community College. We have another location in Brick in Ocean County. And we also operate up in Lodi in Bergen County. One of the things that we do is we provide workshops onsite and we also go into school districts and we have the ability to provide customized training onsite in a school district based upon the professional development needs of the district. Obviously, we do provide program evaluation and auditing services. We enjoy partnerships with numerous state educational agencies, the School Boards Association, Superintendents Associations, Principal Association, business officials and the NJEA. And we are also involved in the placement of interim school administrators. We do all positions with the exception of superintendent, which are handled by the Superintendents Association. A little bit about the audit. Sorry about that. We are looking to assign two consultants to conduct the audit. John, to the right of me, he will be one of them. Talk a little bit about him a bit later on. We're looking to begin the audit at some point in time in March and obviously, we're looking to conclude in June, certainly before- looking to conclude in June, certainly before the end of the school year. We're going to be doing a lot of things as part of the audit. Definitely a review of records and documents, taking a look at dates, taking a look at evaluations, taking a look at reevaluations, just crossing Ts, dotting Is with respect to records, paperwork, that kind of thing. We'll be looking at special education program delivery, we'll be looking at curricular offerings, also looking at continuity of services across schools in the district. West Orange is a large district with a number of schools, so certainly be taking a look at services across schools. Taking a look at the autistic program, certainly the transition services also, making sure that as students reach that graduation time, that there are plans and goals in place for their post-secondary plans. We're gonna be taking a look at district facilities that are allocated towards providing special education services, taking a look at the in-class support model that's being used in the district, student performance status, so certainly we're going to be looking at how well they're doing within particular courses offered in the district, along with their performance on different state testing such as PARC. Taking a look at home instruction services, supplemental instructional services, special education transportation, complete review of related services, so we're gonna be looking at speech therapy, occupational therapy, physical therapy, counseling, that type of thing, and also reviewing teacher, child study team, paraprofessional, professional development activities and needs. Continuing on, we'll be reviewing special education technology services and software. I know that the district is utilizing IEP Direct, we'll be taking a look at that, and other software programs that are offered for instructional delivery. Certainly, taking a look at procedures to ensure non-discriminatory identification and evaluation, we wanna make sure that the district is in full compliance with special education code. Reviewing out-of-district placement data, how many students are placed out, where are they going, how much is it costing, could those services be delivered in-house as opposed to sending students out, we'll be taking a look at all of that. Looking at the master scheduling process for special education classes, and also reviewing teacher, child study team, and paraprofessional staffing patterns as they exist across district schools. We'll be looking at any due process petitions and complaint investigations over the past thirty-six months. I'm sure I don't have to remind the Board that special education at times can be a lot of lawsuits, a lot of issues such as that, so we're going to be taking a look at that. Looking at enrollment trends, what's going on with special ed enrollment in the district? Is it going up, is it going down? Are there different types of classifications we're seeing more of, less of? What do the classrooms look like? What's going on? What do we expect coming in? Review of the special education budget, because pretty much anything that we're talking about here tonight is going to impact your special education budget. We're looking to conduct forums with the special education teachers, administrators, child study team members, guidance counselors, so we wanna hear from parents, we wanna hear from the folks that work here, get get their input about the special education programs being offered in the district. We are going to take a look at special education instruction by walkthroughs, so the auditors will be going to the schools, visiting the schools, taking a look at what's going on in the classrooms. We'll be putting together our findings, so what the Board's going to see is a final report, so there will be a written report. The written report will be inclusive of recommendations, okay? And the auditors will be prepared, along with myself, to make a presentation to the Board, to the community, whatever it is that the Board would like, that's what we will be ready and prepared to do. Little bit about the auditors that are going to be assigned to the project. We have Joan Ruberton, and I apologize, Joan could not be with us tonight, but she's working very hard these days, and it's just kinda difficult for her to be able to make it up to West Orange this evening, but she brings a wealth of experience to the project. As you can see, she has been a district supervisor of special education, an LDTC, a special education teacher. She's also a training consultant and partner in a company known as Inclusion Works, and certainly she has been a very successful consultant for EIRC since her retirement a few years ago. To the right of me is John Reagan, and I've had the privilege of working with John for the past fifteen years. We're colleagues, and, you know, we're good friends, and John brings a tremendous amount of experience to the project. He's currently one of the auditors that is working in the Lakewood District, we're currently finishing up a special ed auditing project there. John was a director, excuse me, district supervisor of special education at the Greater Harbor Regional School District. He was also a supervisor, special ed, he was a vice principal, principal for an approved private school for the handicapped, and he also has a background in serving as an administrator in residential services areas. And he has been a consultant for EIRC since his retirement last year. I will be providing, I will be providing oversight of the project at EIRC. I'm an educational specialist for EIRC. I am a retired superintendent, assistant superintendent, my stuff's up there, and I will be working with the auditors really on a daily, weekly basis, making sure that all activities are being performed, that they are keeping very, very detailed records. We will work together on format of a final report, of course, in conjunction with school officials, and I'm sure feedback that they will get from the Board of Ed. And my job is pretty much to be making sure that everybody's on task, and that we are getting things accomplished. If we're running into any problems, I will serve as the conduit to the district in looking to resolve any issues that may come up that could be impede the audit in any way, shape, or form. Certainly, I think one of the strengths that we bring to the program is experience in performing these audits, having consultants that have just a wealth of experience in the area of special ed, working in public school districts. So our folks know public ed, you know, they have been in the trenches in a nu- a number of different positions, and I think that they bring an understanding and an empathy for what special education teachers and administrators deal with on a daily basis. They also understand what it's like to work with parents, and concerns that parents have about special education programs, and they're certainly sensitive to any issues that Boards of Education would have with respect to special education programming. Okay, the fee proposal, we're basically looking at a total of twenty-two consultant workdays, the preparation of the written report of audit findings with recommendations, and certainly the presentation to the Board of Education and/or other audiences to be determined by the district. And with that being said, if anyone has any questions, John and I will do our best.
Okay, John, if we can just switch seats, if you wanna keep the microphone that you have, we'll have the Board come back up, and and we'll just have the the Board of, the Board of Ed ask you questions, and then we'll switch gears and we'll turn it over to the public once the the Board is done.
Thank you, Dr. Chicorello, and and thank you, John, missing your last name, Reagan, thank you, Mr. Reagan.
Excuse me, Lauren, can you turn our lights on? Thank you.
Okay, I'll start with you, Mrs. Lab. Do you have any questions for EIRC for?
Sure.
Mr. Reagan and Dr. Chicorello.
Thank you very much for the presentation this evening. Coincidentally, I was on the phone with John Worthington this morning, and he did mention your experience in the state doing what you do, so it's nice to know the head of special ed for the state recognizes your company, it's always a good thing. Just really a couple of comments and a wish list, so to speak, for, you know, what you're doing for the audit. Let me find my notes. One of the things I would like for a review would also be the summer extended program, you know, as it relates to the IEP, how are the students progressing, where are the goals and the benchmarks for those programs, and also, of course, the staffing for those programs. We had our Director of Guidance here, I think it was the last board meeting, and my son, who had graduated years ago, who was classified, at the time, we had a dedicated guidance counselor who spoke directly to or worked directly with the special education students as it relates to colleges. We no longer have that person in our employ, she retired, and the information I got from the Director was now that workload is kinda spread across all the guidance counselors, so I would like to know from your recommendation and your review, is that appropriate? Do you recommend, again, having a dedicated person? I I don't really know, but I just know what was, no longer is, so I'm curious as to the feedback from your analysis of that. Also, I'm interested in your assessment of the group sessions for therapies, if the groupings are appropriate. A case example is, you have five kids in a group therapy for speech, two have an apraxia, three have a processing issue. Are we getting the best bang for our buck having those groupings, or is it just simply based on the availability of the student's schedule and the therapist's schedule? I have no idea, but again, I just wanna make sure the groupings are appropriate and to the best for our students, or for the best for our students. When you do the sampling of the IEPs, I understand you had indicated ten percent, I'm just curious, is it going to be a random ten percent, or will it be a concerted effort of X amount for preschool handicapped, X amount for resource in class support? Do you?
Well, I think in terms of of the audit, I mean, obviously, it's very far-reaching. I mean, many things Dr. Chicorello spoke about could could take, you know, a year or two at least.
Right.
And that's why it's very important that we get from you those targeted areas that you're looking for us to look at. We can look at things like the IEP, we can look at the contents therein, evaluations, you know, what what is put into those, the quality of that, all of those sorts of things are gonna come into play when it comes to making decisions or recommendations based on the summer program, with the groups for, you know, the therapies or the related services. So any one of those things, even, I think, the the quality of instruction, some of the programs, some of the formats of looking at the IEP, interviewing people, doing tours, and all those things are gonna kinda come into play to make recommendations to really target those things. So, in terms of a ten percent review of records, again, I think that they'll be targeted based on those areas that you're looking to see, you know, what are we doing best for those students, are they progressing, are they not? So it will be targeted, and so we'll work with your administration on that data that we need through reports. I know IEP Direct provides a wealth of information, and we can have reports printed in any variety of ways. NJ Smart has a lot of sources of data, so, and all those things, we'll we'll come prepared with, you know, those areas that we need right from the get-go, to get that information, start looking at it, and following up with interviews and with tours and other things that we have in the audit.
Okay.
We are gonna also, you know, from a sampling standpoint, we do like to try to also get a bit of a random sampling. We try to make sure, I hate to use the term, but it's come up in other audits, we want to avoid just seeing sanitized documents, if you know what I'm saying. So we wanna get a a good look at everything. And so, we will look to not have records, not all the records be prepared, pulled for us. We we will want to kinda be marched over and allow us to do our own, you know, pulling and sampling.
Okay, well, in that same vein, when you mentioned walkthroughs, are they announced or unannounced, or both?
For the most part, they have been announced, and it's just announced the fact that, you know, we're gonna be in the building, you know, it may not necessarily be that we're going to be at a particular classroom at this time of day, but, you know, we have to coordinate activities, and that's one of the things that we have to do to make the audit successful, is identifying and working with key people in the district to make sure that when the auditors go into the school, they're able to accomplish everything they need to accomplish. So, you know, we would be working with maybe the building principals, the Director of Special Education, hey, you know, we're going to be visiting this school this day, we're going to be be there by eight o'clock in the morning and be spending three hours just walking through classrooms. So, a lot of that's going to have to be put into play for us, because we just can't walk in the building, okay? And we also want to make sure that the staff members know that we're coming, and that, you know, we're there, and that, you know, we're not there to be, best word to describe it, you know, we're we're not there to be necessarily looking at, you know, evaluating their performance as opposed to reviewing programs, and yet we wanna make sure that they are comfortable with us. We're going to be talking with a lot of staff members, and and we need to make sure that they feel comfortable in speaking to us in a non-threatening type of way. We do not report names with audits, so anytime that we will be dealing with staff members, you know, we respect their privacy, and, you know, so that will not be part of an audit that we would do, would be any, you know, this is, this is a result of interviews with, you know, particular teachers, but there will be no mention of names. We do the same thing across the board with administrators, too.
Well, yeah, I mean, this is not an exercise in gotcha, this is
Absolutely.
An exercise in for the good of the order.
Correct.
So I appreciate that. What else do I wanna ask you about? And again, this may be old news, 'cause my son graduated a number of years ago, but I knew at the time that there were concerns from staff members, that they were not all the time involved in group meetings, for instance. I'm a second-grade resource teacher, and I don't get to talk to the other second-grade teachers in my building about stuff. So, you know, I just wanna see if there's opportunity for common time that these teachers actually get to talk to their colleagues when it's appropriate and necessary. So, you know, I just don't know consistently, high school, middle school, elementary, if that's happening, if it's not happening, but again, that's something that I would be looking for. And also, I'm curious, you know, you indicated, when you're reviewing the due process petitions and complaints, clearly, I'm looking as a board member for patterns, you know, is this school doing something that that school is not, or consistently or systemically, is the district being cited, or are there complaints about the same thing all the time? And I'm also concerned about the timeframe where parents are consulted, you know, about everything, really. I mean, are we meeting those very specific mandated timeframes of getting back to parents? So, that's basically what I have for right now, but thank you very much, and
You're right on target, because of those would be types of things.
I'm sorry, can you just speak into the mic only because we're taping?
I I'm sorry, but you're right on target, those are the types of things that we would be looking at also, certainly with any of the complaint investigations, you know, why are they, why do they exist, what are they for, is it, is there a pattern that's developed, you know, why is this taking place? And so, it's it's pretty thorough.
Great, thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mrs. Lab. Mr. Schwartzman?
I think it's very comprehensive. One of the, just to add on, is on the compliance end, that overall, whether the district is in compliance from an overall perspective, as well as on the individual basis, on the individual IEPs, and I concur that it's important to do both targeted and random sampling across various schools and IEPs, I think, that will allow us to not only get IEPs and assessments of individuals, but plus on the randomness. The other area I would ask to look at is on staffing specifically in regard to one-to-one aides, the number of one-to-one aides we have, are we in compliance, other recommendations, both good and bad, as well as, as Ms. Lab put in, talked about due process, the the amount, the due process, how many complaints we have, and whether we're following through.
In terms of the due process, again, not to reinvent
In terms of the due process, again, not to reinvent the wheel, but clearly, we'll be looking at all of the Office of Special Education monitoring ports from the LRE and the others that they provide to see where you stand currently with meeting compliance with those items. So if there are reoccurring issues such as LRE and making those standards, and looking at IEPs to see what's behind the mechanics of those decisions and how they're being made. So, you know, again, we'll be looking at those reports from the Office of Special Education and those monitoring ports.
Thank you, Mr. Schwartzbaum. Mr. Robertson.
Thank you. Couple of things. I see that one of the areas that you'll be looking at is review procedures to ensure nondiscriminatory identification and evaluation. There's a lot of data out there that indicates that African-Americans, particularly African-American males, are over-indexing in terms of being classified, and there's a feeling that there's, there's many have cited unconscious bias as part of the issue. Have you had any training in cultural competency, and what approach do you take towards evaluating this?
I can only say that in terms of looking at processes where students are being referred, in terms of what are the district's policies and procedures on identification of students. I know that looking at interventions within the curriculum and the programs is a piece, but also looking at INRS processes and procedures, as well as looking at administration and looking at disciplinary action and suspension practices procedures, those sorts of things that ultimately result in suspensions from school, and possibly looking at more restrictive types of programming, and even classification would be some of the areas that we would look at there.
Okay. Also, getting back to the due process question, while you can certainly look at records of cited in state audits and repeated violations, will you also be exploring the complaints issued by parents that may not have been included within a state audit?
Well, one of the things that we have done in previous audits is we have worked with the board attorney, or whatever attorney that you may be working with who handles this for the district. And, you know, we spend time with the attorney to get a flavor of, you know, what's been going on in the district, and, you know, we can go back usually at least a couple of years. And so that's pretty much the approach that we would use, is we want to, we need to find the person that you can tell us is the one that we need to see, so we're able to, you know, go in, take a look at what's going on, and be able to make some determinations and some possible recommendations based on that.
Okay. I want to piggyback on a question that Mr. Schwartzbaum asked. We suspect, and this has a great cost impact, that we may have an overabundance of one-to-one aides. How would you actually evaluate that?
Well, I think we need to first look at the student's IEP and look at the evaluations and all the things that necessitate that related service. Obviously, that's a very restrictive approach to providing a service. And then looking at what accommodations, what modifications have been tried, have been revisited, have been revised, so on and so forth. I also think through the interview process of teachers and child study team. Sometimes, some of those things are an easy go-to, and I think there's a lot of things that need to be looked at and evaluated, you know, prior to getting to that point, and really kind of checking to see that those things have been done, in fact, and what has been tried, and what has been, you know, again, revisited, revised, so on and so forth. So that would be the basis for really kind of making those determinations for that kind of service.
Okay. I don't see it mentioned here, and I wasn't sure if it's included, but gifted and talented is actually considered a special need, although it may not be associated necessarily with an IEP, and it may be addressed programmatically. Is that something that falls within your purview? Because that's also, while it's not a district goal, it's part of our strategic planning goals.
I'm going to address that by saying no. We have not, we have not looked at gifted and talented as part of a special education audit. I mean, it is something that we could potentially work with you if that's something that you would like to have done, but we believe that within the scope of what we have presented, that that would really exceed what we would be looking to accomplish through this particular audit, though it is something that we could do. One of the things that EIRC, we just received a contract to go in and do a audit of media centers in the, like, West Windsor Plainsboro district. So, you know, some, like specialized programs, it is something that we can do, but I think that for, it doesn't match up with everything that we're going to be looking to do through this audit, though we could do it, but maybe outside the scope.
Understood. And what you're doing is very comprehensive, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robertson. Thank you for your very comprehensive presentation. I just have a couple of questions in addition to my colleagues. You've mentioned that you're working with the Lakewood district now. What other districts are you working with? Just name a few.
We have worked with Lakewood, we have worked with the Sweetsborough Woolwood School District down in South Jersey, and we are entering into a contract with the Mount Holly School District very shortly.
Okay. Okay. You mentioned the audit will be starting somewhere around March. I know we have our park schedule testing in here, and we're going to be having the exam testing in March, April. How intrusive will you be, because the kids are going to be tested at that time?
One of the things that we would look to do is work through Superintendent Rutske in developing a schedule that is going to work for the district. I mean, certainly to be coming in, we don't want to be any more disruptive than what we need to be, and certainly, things like the park test have to take priority, and we can find a way to work around that. I think that if we're able to begin in March, which I'm sure, you know, there's no reason why we would not be able to, and having March, April, May, and into June, we can get it done. And we do not want to be disruptive to what's going on with that state testing. We realize how important that is to the district.
One of the items you have listed here is a forum, conduct forums with teachers, childhood team members, parents, et cetera. How many forums will you be conducting?
That is something where we would look to work with the superintendent and other administrators that would be assigned to the project. You know your district better than we do, and, you know, you know the parents, you know the schools, and we're looking to get some guidance from you as to the best way to make that happen, and we would like to take, you know, you take the lead in letting us know the types of things that have worked for you, and then we can add to that, and we can, you know, schedule things that are going to work for the parents.
Okay.
Yeah, Ms. Mordecai, we'd be looking at a couple of parent evenings where they would come out, and parents could come in and have an open forum. During the day, we'd be looking at having child study team meetings, and certainly offering it to teachers as well to come out. The, and the other piece is having a questionnaire/survey available for people who aren't able to come, that they can provide their input, and we'd work with the two gentlemen, and ERIC on creating that, so they would get the feedback they're looking for.
Okay. And I'm glad to see that you're going to be conducting this in both English and Spanish, because we do have a large population of IEP. Oh, I have one other. In your review of the, of transition and college and career readiness, will you also be looking at life and social skills in your audit?
Yes, and again, in terms of those areas that you're looking for us to, you know, hone in on and target, I mean, that'd be something, too, that we could look at in great detail, greater detail. Again, there's so many things to cover and look at, you know, looking at post-secondary goals and how our teams, you know, develop plans to support students to get to those ends. If that be one of them, then clearly, we'll be looking at that specifically.
Okay. Thank you. Mrs. Lab, yes.
Just one more follow-up question. Do I? Thank you. Again, going back to the aides, I'm curious as to the process of the placement of the aides. To me, when you have an aide in your classroom as a teacher, it's a marriage for the year, and I want to see if our teachers actually are having input into the selection and the placement of the aides in their classrooms, because the teacher may say, I need an aide who's strong in curriculum presentation, or another aide might say, or a teacher might say, I need somebody who could really help out with discipline. Is there any input from our educators as to the placements of that person in the classroom?
Well, that would be something that we could discover through the forums and through interviews. I mean, clearly, I think picking and choosing what avenue we go, and I think we need to look at both, because in a group setting, people will be, you know, very willing to share information in that regard, and maybe less, whereas individual interviews for certain programs, if you will, could yield those kind of details, especially for some of the more self-contained programs, where you may see a lot more aides, and maybe targeting those teachers as to, you know, what's the process they have in terms of the development of supports in their classroom, so.
All right, and just my final question or point. When you do the facility survey, years ago, we would have survey, I'm sorry, therapies in stairwells, you know, speech next to the band room, all kinds of crazy stuff, and, you know, that was before we had our additions built onto our buildings. So I'm hoping now that the therapeutic settings are conducive to therapies being provided without distractions. So again, when you do your facility thing, I would love to see the feedback from that.
I did share with the superintendent that my wife was a speech therapist for 31 years before she retired, and over the years, listened to many stories about providing speech in a broom closet, a hallway, a bathroom, any place that you couldn't even imagine would be, you know, where she would give it. So it's certainly not something that is unique to the West Orange School District, but certainly, it's a concern that we can take a look at.
Great. Thank you very much. Good to hear.
Thank you very much.
Okay, gentlemen, if you don't mind just sitting over here with the microphone, we're going to invite the public to come up. They will come to this podium, that way they can see you and you can address them. Ms. Mordecai.
Yes, please. If anyone would like to come up and ask questions, please do so. The microphone is here, and just please provide your name, address, and we have a clock for three minutes to allow for time for comment. Hello, I didn't see you back there. Sorry.
Sue Freeval, Ten Ridge U Avenue. I think this raises more questions than all the time to get to in three minutes, but notably missing from this is any mention of the district CPAC or the details of the parent involvement. The CPAC and a lot of the parents have been expecting a thorough review of special services, and I'm not sure that 22 workdays is going to be enough to do that between making visits to classrooms, going through IEPs, and if mostly what the audit is going to look at is the written record, you're not going to find the things the parents are complaining about right now. Honestly, asking the Board of Ed to target the areas of concern is sort of self-defeating. If the Board of Ed knew what areas to target and what the problems were, you wouldn't need this audit so much. What we really need to look at are the practices that parents are getting in the meetings. When they try to make an initial request for referral and are put off verbally, and that's not part of the written record. Parents go in, they say, I think my child has an issue, and they're put off. Oh, wait till after second grade, wait till after third grade. No, we don't do that. Take an INRS first. This is what people are hearing. When you look at an IEP, you're not going to be seeing the conversations that went on that led to that IEP. Unless you go and check with the parents and say, how did you arrive here, and what discussions did you have in that meeting? You're not going to know whether the district is really complying with the spirit of the law or the interests of the child. The conversations parents have where they're told, we don't believe in individual speech therapy for any child. Like, that's literally what parents are told, to make sure their kids go into group therapy, because there's no time in the schedule for an individual session. There are, let's see, what else can I get to? Process and procedures, evals, like, parents are being put off verbally and in other ways that do not comply with the law, but you're not going to see that looking at a bunch of IEPs. You're not going to see all those attempts by parents to get services that the district put off. As for inclusion, I'd like to know how this audit would detect things like when a parent asks for their child to be in inclusion, to be in a more mainstreamed environment, and they're told that that type of class doesn't exist in this school in your child's grade, so no, you can't have it. In theory, we know that it's supposed to be what the child needs, what's in the IEP is what the district must provide. In reality, we have parents being told all the time, that's not available in your school. You'll have to go to self-contained. This is what the parents are hearing. How are you going to detect that? When it comes to the Board of Ed knows your district L and knows what works, no. I beg to differ. Some of the questions that they're asking show that they're not really in tune with the parents and with what's actually going on in these meetings. Honestly, when you look at an IEP, how do you know that those parents even spoke English? There is not a single IEP in this district that I know of that has been translated into Spanish, the most common language I know of, for parents who don't speak English. In fact, I was in a meeting where a parent asked if they could have their child's IEP translated into Spanish, and were told, we've never translated an IEP. So you're going to look at the records, but how are you going to talk to the parents, and how are you going to get all of this done in 22 days that means anything to the parents and the children? My time is up. Thank you. Sir?
My name is Adel Dahruq, 36 Morris Road, West Orange. I will not make it long, she addressed most of our concerns, which is you will not find it in any document. You will look at it. She's right, many things is told verbally, many things is exactly as she addressed. Why is the law called for least restrictive environment for kids' education? Many kids thrown to self-contained classes? Many kids being placed in the wrong curriculums or, like you put, kids non-autistic, autistic classes because saving costs? This you will not see in paper. And I would like to know how you can communicate with us guys to hear what being told verbally, not in paper. The owner of the paper is the case manager, not the parents, the school, not us. They write whatever they like, and they do something different. Are you going to meet the parents who has due process hearing going on now? Are you going to, their addresses there, recorded, to hear from them? And again, 22 days for last, for this larger district is too low to cover. I mean, if you count the number of schools, basically, you will skip at least one-third of the schools.
I'm sorry, sir. Could you repeat your name again?
Adel Dahruq.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you.
All right, let me just address a couple of things before we turn it over.
Sure.
Ms. Freeval, one of the most important components to this whole piece is listening, where's Ms. Freeval? Is listening to the parents, and I'm not sure if you missed that part, but there are going to be forums set up, so parents come out, share what's going on. They're welcome to say what they want to say, and they can also do it if they can't make it, and questions will be designed around the information that they're trying to find. They're more than welcome, any parent of the district is more welcome to share what their concern is or what it has been, and specifically, and one of the things in an audit is that you are looking for patterns, all right? And that's a real key to this whole thing, is that doesn't mean that every single person agrees with you, me, the auditors, the board, whoever it is. But what you look for when you do an audit are patterns, and those are things that we start to address. So it doesn't mean because one person says something that's concerning, that because it's not a pattern, we don't address it. It's that we look at the individual pieces, and we also look at patterns. So you and everybody else are more than welcome to be part of that and make sure that that is heard. That is the most important way and the most effective way that the individuals conducting the audit understand exactly how you're feeling and others are feeling. The beauty of having an outside agency do the audit is that they have no connection to the district. They have nothing at all involved with this board, myself, Mr. Caliban, or anybody sitting in the room. And at the end of the day, what they're doing is providing what they find the district is doing well, and what the district is doing that we can improve, and that's a very important piece. But as far as the board not knowing, and if they did, we wouldn't need to have an audit, that's absolutely 100% incorrect. Not only is the board knowledgeable about this, the board absolutely cares, and districts do audits on a regular basis, because when you're in a district, sometimes you can't see out of the district. And when you bring people in that are not attached to it, they evaluate things differently, and they see things differently, and they help. things differently, and they see things differently, and they help the individuals, the directors, the supervisors, see things differently as well. As far as some of the other things, I'm not going to go too far in the weeds because we're here to talk to questions or about the audit, but, and sir, the issue is you'll have the same opportunity to be able to share with them everything that you are concerned about so that they can make sure that they bring that to our attention. Gentlemen, if you want to respond to either individual.
We're going to meet with parents. I mean, that's a big part of what we're going to do. We want to provide a forum where people are able to communicate freely, speak their mind, let us know what they are not happy about, you know, concerns that they've got, let us know what they are happy about. So, you know, we want to provide that forum for that type of open communication to take place. So, you know, that's, my promise to you is part of the audit is we will be meeting with parents, we'll be meeting with staff, certainly providing them with the opportunity to get off their chest, whatever it is that they choose to do so.
Thank you. I just want to add that one of the reasons that we are having this audit is because we have been listening to parents. We have been hearing a lot of parents with complaints as well as compliments, and because this is part of what came out of the district's strategic planning process, some questions about special ed, and that's why we're having the audit. Since I've been on the board, this is the first time we're having an outside auditor come in and take a look at special ed. So it's, you know, it's due time, and as Mr. Rutske said, this is an independent company. We, there's no connection with West Orange. Thank you.
Gentlemen, I want to thank you for coming up and doing the presentation tonight. I know you got a long ride home. Obviously, we'll be in touch tomorrow, and if you need anything in the meantime, you know, safe ride home. Thanks for coming up.
And we would like to certainly thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight, and also to members of the community and the staff of West Orange, and we certainly look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Get home safe. Okay, Mr. Rutske?
Sure, let me go ahead and move on.
Park schedule?
I'm just going to go through these next couple fairly quickly. The next one is the park schedule. I provided the calendar for you, and I just want to point out, so you're not confused, and I'm sure you're not, but on the first page, you see that Grade 5 ELA is starting, obviously, March 27, 28, and then 29. On the same date, you have Grade 6 ELA, and on the same date, you have Grade 9, 10, and 11 ELA. And you'll see below that, that the Unit 1 means that's the first unit that's being done, and how long that unit is. So for Grade 5, it's 90 minutes. For Grade 6, it's 110, and Grade 9, 10, and 11, it's 110 as well. If you flip the page, you see that we move into April, the first week of April, which is the 3rd, 4th, 5th, 6th, and 7th. Again, you'll see the 5th grade. Now we're moving to math, Unit 1, 60 minutes for four days. Then, on the same day, starting on Monday, the 3rd, we have Grade 6 math for 80 minutes for three days, and then the same thing for Algebra 1, Geometry, and Algebra 2 for 90 minutes for those three days. The following week, which is the week of the 10th, that is spring break, the 9th, excuse me, the 7th is Good Friday, so we're off there, and then the following week, 10th through the 14th, we take a couple of days off to get the kids transitioned back in after the break, and we would begin on Wednesday with our 3rd and 4th grade as well as our 7th and 8th grade. So our 3rd and 4th would be doing the English Language Arts, Unit 1 for 90 minutes. Then we see that Unit 2 is 75 minutes for 3rd grade and 90 minutes for 4th grade, and then our Unit 3, which would be on Friday to 21st, is 90 minutes for both grade levels. And the same, if you look at 7 and 8, Unit 1, all the way across, 110, 110, and then Unit 3 finishes with 90 minutes. The following week, we then switch gears to the math, and Grade 3 and 4 math, Unit 1, 2, and 3 would be the 60 minutes, and then we have Bring Your Child to Work Day. We do not have testing on that day, the 27th and the 28th. We have Grade 3 and 4 for 60 minutes. During the same week, we have math for Grade 7 and 8. You'll see Algebra 1, excuse me, Unit 1 is 80 minutes. Those involved in Algebra 1 would also be tested. They have a different test for 90 minutes, and you see that pattern for the 25th and the 26th. You switch over to the next page. That's the two weeks of AP testing, and one of the things that, the reason that we did the high school ELA and the math before the break is to have that time when we come back for the break in preparation for those AP tests. And you see, that's the two weeks of the AP testing. Then we have a couple of weeks that we don't have any testing, and then we have Memorial Day. On the 31st, we have New Jersey Ask Science for Grades 4 and 8, and we have our Biology on the same day, which is the 31st. And then our last month, we move into June. We have the 9-12 Biology the next day, which is June 1st, and then you see the makeup sort of following week on the 7th and the 8th for both New Jersey Ask 4 and 8 and for the Biology. So the calendar is here, and this will be posted tomorrow and, you know, provided to the parents as far as, so they know what the dates are. Letters ready to go with along, so we would have both of these available to be out to the parents so they could see the letter and they could see the actual testing dates. Obviously, this is pending that we don't have any crazy weather in March or April that we would need to make some adjustments, and if we did, we obviously have the flexibility from the state providing a block of time to get all the testing done. Any questions on the park?
My only question on the park, Mr. Rutske, if I may go ahead, I don't know if my colleagues have any questions, but I didn't see a date for makeup for park testing.
Yeah, no, we don't put dates in for makeup. That's done at the building level because then they have the flexibility to have the children make up the test as they need to.
Okay, that was my only question. Mr. Robertson?
No questions?
Mr. Robertson? Mrs. Lab?
Mr. Rutske, can you confirm that there'll be no delayed openings? These are all within the school hours.
That's correct. They're during the school day.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, I just want to explain something that has to be done that's related to the park, and that's why this is in the order it's in. When school districts and/or school buildings within school districts do not have 95% participation on the park, the district is required to write an action plan of what the district is going to try and do to make sure that they get the 95% participation. So I wanted to let you know that we did not meet the grad, the park participation rate in the following schools. West Orange High School, Edison, Roosevelt, Liberty, Gregory, Mount Pleasant, Redwood, and St. Cloud. So the three schools that we did meet the 95% were Hazel, Washington, and Kelly, those three schools. So the other schools have to have an action plan, and I provided the action plan to you and how we're going to address the participation rate. And again, it's fairly broad. The high school in particular, we're, you know, we're going to have a conversation with the kids who are taking the assessment, who, just the importance of taking it and taking it seriously. We can't force kids, and more important, their parents, if the parents don't want them to, we can't force them. We're going to do the very best we can at talking to them, communicating the information, communicating the schedules and the importance. Now, there is a change this year in that the current kids that are in the 9th grade have a different set of regulations for the park, and then the current kids in 8th grade have a completely different, have different expectations from the state in that they have to take it, they have to pass it, and there's different things. I'm not going to go into too much detail tonight about it. It's very specific in the letter that I'm sending out later in this week, and obviously, you have a copy of that letter so you can see how specific it gets, but it's important that the kids do take the park and take it very seriously. So without going into too much detail, you know the schools that did not meet the participation rate. I'll take any questions you have about the action plan.
Does anyone have any questions?
I just have one.
Sure.
Do you have any idea how many districts across the state do not meet this 95% threshold?
I don't know across the state. I can tell you that there's a line that is a little bit south of us that when you cross that line and you go down toward the south, all of the kids take it, and then, you know, northern part, there's less participation in the northern part. I do not know. It's probably something we could find out if we needed to, but I don't know off the top of my head.
I just have one question or I guess comment. If the state allows the students to opt out, how can they turn around and punish us? That's...
It's a good question.
Gotcha.
And I think that, and I won't speak for the state, I'm only assuming, but I think that their intent is to try and have the districts have a plan to encourage more families and more kids to take the test and take it seriously. I think it's a little ludicrous that they don't require it, but then we have to say how we're going to increase it, but I think their intent is positive and trying to have individuals in the district encourage others to take it. Okay, just want to move on. I got this piece and then one that is not on the superintendent's report as I, these, we're already taking care of the notes, we're already done, so I'm going to add one to it, but let me talk about graduation rate for a moment. There was something that came out recently, and last year, I had a conversation, and I'm going to have a conversation again this year about, around graduation rate because it's very important for those that don't understand what goes into making up the graduation rate. And I'm going to start with the first one, and I'm going to be very respectful to the 18 to 21-year program, year-old program, because I would never, ever, ever recommend that an 18 to 21-year-old transition program go away. There was some conversation in this lab with a gentleman at the state level, John Worthington. We've had some conversations before, and I've told him how unfair it is that a district who tries to help trans, get kids ready for the real world and help them transition from their senior year or their 12th grade year through their years of 18 through 21, the district gets penalized because we have kids that do not graduate based on our choice. And I can be very specific. We had nine children from last school year that could have been done, that would have raised our graduation rate, and it did not because we felt, and so did their families feel, that it was in the best interest of those nine students to stay in the transition program. So we did. We're not concerned that those nine students are lowering the graduation rate, but I think it's important that everybody understands that there's more factors to the graduation rate than kids literally just not graduating. These, this is a phenomenal program that very few districts have, and what we've been talking to the state level about is why should the West Oranges who have transition programs get penalized? That this is a really good service for kids who need this service after their 17th or 18th birthday and going on a few more years to, you know, really develop those life skills that we know the kids need. There are currently 11 students this year who could be graduating, who will continue to go on in next years to the 18 through 21-year-old program. And understand, that's a huge impact on that number. Couple other things that are really important. We have 16 students that we call off-track, meaning that they have come into our district behind on credits, that they are coming in, and we have seven of those students that were here for less than a year, that left the district, and remember, if they don't go into another New Jersey district, the district is penalized in their graduation rate. So I'll give you an example. One of these seven students were here then less than a year, and they, for lack of a better word, dropped out because they did not tell us where they were going, all right? And we do a very thorough job of trying to find out where they go, and if they go in New Jersey, obviously, it's in New Jersey smart that indicates they moved on to another school district. Because they came to us for less than a year, we are the final school of those kids, and they, when they originally started in 9th grade, they went into a cohort of all the kids with that 9th grade year. So now we get penalized because children moved in and then left us and did not continue their schooling, who we had for less than one school year. And don't get me wrong, when kids move into the district, I want them to have the most success possible, and we're going to do everything we can do, but we have to be realistic that these seven students are not students who started in our elementaries and went through our middles and came up into the high and had the good staff that's working with them to get them prepared for 12th grade. On another note, we had nine students identical to that situation that were with us less than two years. So that's 16 students from last year's graduation rate that were with the West Orange School District for less than two years. And then you add in the 18 to 21-year-old program, and again, wonderful program, would never, ever would I say to get rid of that program, but people don't realize that now you start adding up these students that we have coming in that aren't the West Orange kids going through the system, and then you was talking, the students who are staying in the 18 to 21-year-old program. It makes it very, very hard for people to realize that this makes it challenging. Now, when they come into high school, one of the things that we're evaluating is we have to determine what we can do differently for a child who moves into 10th grade, 11th grade, who's already behind in their credits, meaning that they know right now, sitting with the counselor, sitting with the administrator, that they're already behind and no, and not on course for graduation. And if, you know, that child is coming in and we have very high expectations in this building and throughout the district, you know, that's a very hard thing to do. We have to determine what we're going to do differently, and we're working on this right now. Ms. Mendez and the high school staff and the high school guidance group, everybody's working on this currently for September of next year because we have to realize the clientele is changing, and we have to change with it, and we have to realize that. And if we're not, all we're going to do is continue to stay at that 85%, which we cannot do. And our goal is obviously to get where we need to be at 95% or higher. So when you start adding up the students who have moved in less than two years and are already behind on their credits, and you have the nine students who could graduate and go out of that cohort, but we choose to leave them in to get that developmental life skills, that's a lot of kids that impact that graduation rate. And there's a lot of people who look at that number and say, "What's wrong with the high school? Why are they not doing a good job? They're doing a phenomenal job." And one of the things that we're looking to do this year before the school year's over, and it's a lot of work, is to track the number of kids who entered an elementary school and look at them and look at their work all the way through to the high school and look at that number. Now, let's be very honest here, that number doesn't mean anything. That means, that means nothing. It's just a sheer number about, "These are the kids who started and finished," and look at the success rate. What we have to do differently and better is the kids that we know are coming in because every single year they're coming in, what are we going to do to help them? Because they deserve to have a shot at being successful and graduating here. So if we need to put some things in place, which we have some ideas, and we're just not ready to share yet because it's not a formulated plan yet, but that'll be coming soon, we really have to realize there's a lot of variables involved in this graduation rate. All right, I'll open it up for questions from the board.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rutske. Mrs. Lab?
Thank you for that explanation, Mr. Rutske. I have a couple of concerns as it relates to our requirements for graduation. As you know, I spoke to you, I did an analysis of five local districts here in Essex County. Columbia, Verona, Livingston, and Milburn require 120 credits to graduate. Montclair, 122 credits to graduate. Effective... Effective 2019, Verona will be increasing that requirement to 130 credits. That being said, we require 135 credits. So at this point, we are more than 10% than the norm of these other schools in our district. So when you have students moving in from wherever, they're going to be behind the eight ball. So I'm not quite sure why there's such a discrepancy between our graduation requirements and these other districts that I noted. I mean, I did a cursory review. Everybody has to have their math, their science, you know, English, whatever it is. But I would have to assume that the increase or the discrepancy of those 15 credits most likely are electives that we're requiring. Is that correct, or...
I think you bring up a really good point, and obviously I'm not prepared to discuss it, but I will certainly look into it for next board meeting.
Okay. I'll send you and Mr. Mendez the information I received or got. Thank you.
Mr. Schwartzbaum?
So currently, we're at approximately 85% versus a goal of 95%. And assuming there's approximately 500 students, so we're approximately 50 students behind in order to hit that. If you were to take a pro forma graduation rate, taking out the 18 to 21, where do you think we would be?
We started to look at that data, and we don't have it for tonight's meeting, but we will have it for the next meeting. As I said, there's a lot of moving parts to this thing, and we really have to evaluate, what is it that we can do differently and better? And the answer may be nothing. And we have to understand that sometimes it's just that our district's expectations are very high, and when kids come in, they haven't had that rigor, they're not... There's a lot of pieces to this. So we just need a little time to pull this together. It was more about something that was put out, and again, there's misinformation that gets put out. And I wanted to clarify that, yes, the number's correct, but understand what makes up that number, and more importantly, why we're at the number we're at.
Mr. Robertson?
There's 27 kids, that's correct.
Mr. Robertson?
What? It sounds like you're still searching for this, but I'd be curious to know, for the 18 to 21 and for the kids who don't fall into that, or the off-track, or even for the on-track, off-track, what is the profile? Are there things that we can pull in terms of, you know, are they, from an economic standpoint, from a special needs standpoint? What is the profile of these students? And given what the profile data would indicate, then, you know, that could help to inform how we could intervene earlier and more effectively.
Yeah, I agree. And we started to look at just our current, the kids, and there were 25 students, Mr. Robertson. We looked at the socioeconomic, it was not a factor. We had four special education students of the 25. We had eight white students, eight Hispanic students, eight African-American students, and one multi-student. So there isn't really a pattern. We need to go back and look a couple of years ago and see if we can identify... Again, I think there's a lot, as I said several times tonight, there's a lot of moving pieces to this. And we're looking at the profile, and we're seeing what do we have in place in the middle schools that could help us with the kids that are in our middle schools' transition up to high school? And are they prepared? And where are they struggling? And what can we do down below? And lots of things. So this is one that is part of the strategic plan, and there's a lot of work that's been done already, but we still have a lot of work to do.
One last question. And once again, knowing you don't have the answer to this yet, but as you look at the profile data, is it possible that for some of the off-track students and some of these other students, that they may have fallen through the cracks and were not classified, or maybe they needed to be, should be? But really looking at, there have to be some factors or traits that contribute to their inability to graduate or to their moving to another district.
Yeah, and one of the things I didn't point out, you know, there are kids that moved to Florida, there are kids that moved to other countries, you know, things that, again, we can't determine, but that counts against us. So, you know, a child who has a family member in another country, and they move there because, whatever reason, family issues, they move there, there's nothing we can do. Maybe that student was on track and just had to move, but that counts against us. So we just needed some more time to pull some more data together, look at longitudinal information.
Thank you.
I just have one question, Mr. Rutske. Is there something we can put in place in the summer? I know when we implemented the small learning communities at the high school, we had a summer step-up program. Is that something that we can expand?
Well, again, that's in place. There's a lot of things that we have in place. And the idea is you have to look at the data, look at the groups of individuals we're talking about, and work backwards and look, you know, five years back and then work up. So that's all part of the evaluation about, you know, when they came through the middle schools, what did it look like for them? What, how were they doing on assessments? Was there concern? So on and so forth. And so, again, there's a lot of work that needs to be done in identifying. And then really, you know, one of the most important things that I've been talking about is having people assigned to kids. And, you know, we have, let's say we have 25 kids. Well, we have five administrators in the five building administrators. Well, each one of them gets five kids, and they become their kid. And they're talking to the teachers with them, they're meeting with the guidance council, they're checking in with them on a regular basis. It's not just the council's job, it's just not, it's everybody's job when we know that there are concerns with students. And I'm not talking about a subgroup or a population. I'm talking about identifying the student early on when they're freshman year and looking to say, okay, this child is starting to struggle, so let's get them hooked up with individuals. Let's get them hooked up so they become the priority. And we're doing a lot of check-ins, weekly check-ins about, okay, let's meet, let's sit with your council, and let's have a conversation. You're struggling in these two areas, let's bring the two teachers, and let's have a conversation. You know, there's a lot to be said for somebody at school becoming that individual who is, you know, the adult mentor. And there's student mentors, but we've got to do some different things and look at things differently about who's going to take this young man or young lady under their wing and do what needs to be done.
One other question. How many students graduate through the portfolio assessment?
I don't have that number, but I'll have it for you next meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. One thing that was not able to get on the agenda in time was the opportunity... There was an article put out last week that had a lot of misinformation in it. And it was about our middle schools, and in particular about Edison. I want to give the principals the opportunity. I believe that Mr. Fitzgerald is here, along with Mr. Hush and Mr. Klempt. I want to give these gentlemen the opportunity to come up and share some factual data on some information that was shared and some things that were completely false. So gentlemen, I'm going to turn it over to you and go ahead and let you speak towards things.
Good evening. Obviously, there were a number of things that were brought up in the article. I guess we'll pretty much take turns in regards to what we speak to. I'm going to speak primarily to the honors classes for the middle schools. Demographics was brought into question, so I wanted to share with everyone the demographics of the honors. I'll do it by grade, and when I make grade, when we get to the seventh and eighth grade, that includes both Liberty and Roosevelt. For all honors classes in the sixth grade, percentage-wise, African-American makes up 24.6%. Asians make up 16.1%, Hispanics 5%, multiracial's 18.6%, Caucasian is 33.2%, and the Pacific Islander was 2.5%. That's sixth grade. In all seventh grade, again, as Roosevelt and Liberty students combined, African-American is 32.2%, Asian is 24.3%, Hispanic is 8.3%, multiracial is 2.7%, and Caucasian is 32.5%, and that's in the seventh grade. All honors in the eighth grade, African-American was 26.5%, Asian was 16.4%, Hispanic was 9.8%. We had no representation in the multiracial category, and the Caucasian was 47.3%. Overall, total, all students, that's sixth, seventh, and eighth grade honors, all students in all these classes, the African-Americans made up 29.8%, Asian is 20.5%, Hispanic is 1.4%, multiracial 6%, Caucasian is 41.7%, and the Pacific was .6%. Overall, very diverse mixture in regards to all of our honors classes. I was, not saying that there was a claim, it was a question in regards to what the demographics were.
Okay.
Okay. So what I saw as far as the article was concerned was pretty much reflective of what data I was able to gather, but it was called into question as whether or not there were, what the demographics were, whether it was heavier in one category than the other. So just being able to share the data so people know what is reflected in our classrooms.
Demographics of the district?
We do. I don't have that with me right now.
Excellent, yeah.
Any other questions before I... No?
Yes, actually. First of all, thank you for providing that.
No problem.
And you all do a wonderful job. You work very, very hard. As we look though at the honors, current honors criteria, and to Mr. Schwartzbaum's question about the demographics, I would note that, you know, when you look at indexing, like the percentage of African-Americans versus the percentage, you know, we still, we have work to do. Or as you go further up in grades, we find that African-American, Hispanic percentages tend to increase in terms of the numbers, and Caucasian tends to decrease. And you see, we're seeing a proportionally much larger percentage. It would make me look, it would make me wonder, when we look back at the much debated honors criteria, how that also plays out. I've talked with a lot of parents and kids directly who are very frustrated, who got straight A's in their courses. And right now, for fifth graders going into sixth grade, the grades aren't even part of the criteria. So when you have a kid who's getting straight A's, not getting into honors necessarily because they may not have tested well or done well in a particular test, and see this mostly with math, that can impact numbers.
Correct.
That's number one. Number two, as we look at beyond the grades and we look at test content, for every other test we provide, whether it's tests that are standardized, like SAT, to quarterly assessments, et cetera, quarterly benchmarks, we tend to, we usually provide our kids with some sort of test prep guide or problems beforehand. We don't for this. So I would also look at that as an impacting factor. Number three, in looking at testing versus grades and best practices, I'd note that we, right now in the high school, we have the most, the greatest number of AP students we've ever had. We have the greatest number of honors students we've ever had. And we have broken new grounds in terms of kids going to West Point and all this stuff. Those kids during their years in middle school didn't take an honors test. They got into honors through their grades. So somehow, we have this pipeline that we created and all these great numbers, and the kids got in on the basis of making the grade. So as we look at these numbers, I hope that we're looking very hard at the tracking data, because we're talking about our pipeline, too. This isn't just directed at you. You know, I adore you, man. This is, but we're looking at our pipeline data. Because the more restrictive we are for fifth graders going into sixth grade, and for me, this is kind of personal as well as professional. My daughter's in fifth grade now, and I'm wondering, gee, is she going to be freaking out taking these tests? And she's got straight A's. As we look at fifth graders going into sixth grade, then sixth going to seventh, and seventh going to eighth, and then you add that if you get a B in honors, you don't get to stay, you have to test to stay. We are about to narrow our pipeline, and that's going to impact the number of kids in honors in high school, the number of kids in AP, and then the number of kids, based on their competitive criteria, who get to apply to really, really the best colleges. So I hope that as you're taking part in this, Mr. Klempt, I miss you, man. Great principal. Mr. Fitzgerald, see you again next year. As we're looking at our criteria, and we're looking what our end goals are, that we're going to seriously reevaluate the use of a test. And the use of a test where I've had kids stand right up here and present that contains materials and math that they've never been tested on. And some districts in New York and New Jersey actually have a rule that you can't test a kid, except for GNT, Gifted and Talented, you can't test a kid on things that they haven't had before. So I have no doubt that this data is what it is, and I thank you for sharing it. But now it makes me question our methods even more.
Well, just a... Good, let me just address a couple of things. I think that there is this misnomer that we just use a teacher recommendation to get into high school, that they look at extensive data. We had a couple of individuals who were eighth grade teachers, who are honors and HAP teachers, and they were explaining to the committee that they look at extensive data that is built up. It's not just a teacher recommendation. There is very specific criteria that is used for those kids to get in. So to think that we're just allowing kids to get into the high school program based on that is not factual. The second piece is, you have to understand that, when you mentioned something about accepting into the Gifted and Talented program, that they don't usually provide new information except for the Gifted and Talented.
No, I didn't say that.
Yeah.
What I'm saying is, I said, except that our test currently, two things. Our test for honors, particularly it's been noted for math, are testing kids on materials. We've had, we've had HAP students actually stand up here who are also straight A students and say, you know, bored, there were problems on that test that we were never taught about. And it's okay to do that for Gifted and Talented. You do expect the test kids over and above with to learn to see if they can intuitively grasp the concepts and conquer them. But not for honors.
Okay, but you understand that honors is the GNT, they only have the two pieces, right?
Ah, that's the problem.
So we have to mend the two, Mr. Robertson. That's what the committee's looking at.
Well, that's the whole problem. Other schools, you can look at Milburn, you could look at Chatham, you could look at a lot of top-performing districts. And GNT is, and honors are two separate tracks. In fact, what many of them do is, you'll have the regular honors track, and you can get into that usually by straight A's or A average. And then you have GNT honors. If a kid is gifted, and then, you know, some even demonstrate for gifted and talented. But you have two different honors tracks. It's in trying to combine honors, and when you look nationally, Gifted and Talented tends to be your top 3% and most your top 5%. While if you look at honors and you do it on the basis of kids who are performing with straight A's, you may go into top 10%, the top 20%. So what I'm saying is, I've never meant that the high school only looks at teacher, you know, teacher evaluations, teacher recommendations, not that. I'm saying that we're narrowing that funnel, starting at fifth graders going into sixth grade, by basing their ability to get into sixth grade honors on a test and the teacher's recommendation. And so we have straight A students who are excluded from honors. So you automatically take a whole bunch of kids who are doing well, and you're cutting them out of that funnel. And then you have a kid who may get in and has a B, and, you know, has to fight to stay in. And then going from seventh to eighth, you have, you know, you have to test in eighth. So you're narrowing the funnel with the test and excluding a lot of kids who are getting straight... And, so, you're narrowing the funnel with the test and excluding a lot of kids who are getting straight A's. That was my point. And, and we have people who have succeeded all the way up through high school, who when they were in middle school, didn't have to take a test, all they had to do was literally make the grade.
Right, but Mr. Robertson, haven't you complained for three years that the HAP program is not good and the criteria is not good?
Damn straight. But these are, we're talking about two different things.
What, what do they use for that?
Honors, the, what I'm saying very clearly is the best practice. When you look at some of the top performing districts in this state, the best, and when you look at how we have top performing students right now, graduating, going to great colleges, the best practice for honors is to open it up and to allow kids to make it, make it, make it into honors on the basis of A average grades. And the best practice at top performing districts is that you don't force honors and GNT together. You have a separate GNT track, K through twelve, and a separate honors track. And then you can have within GNT, honors, GNT. We have tried to force them together, we're narrowing the pyramid and excluding kids from opportunity. Yes?
Mr. Robertson, if I may, could I have any of the principals who are here respond to some of your comments?
Well, one thing I do wanna make clear is that the test is not the only criteria that allows students, or determines whether a student gets in or is denied the opportunity into honors. It is a multi-criteria type of platform, in which case there are fail safes even built in, where kids are brought into honors, even if they did not pass that assessment, because there are other things that, that, that are being considered as far as honors concerned. Now, a lot of the things you brought up are things that the committee discusses. Every year, the committee, well, starting last year, brought a committee which involved parents, which involved administrators, which involved teachers of all levels, um, to discuss a lot of the concerns that some parents may have brought up. Some of the things you spoke about as far as grades and so on and so forth were brought up in our first meeting. And we'll continue those conversations as we move in, um, into the process a little bit more. So, it's not that something was set in stone two years ago, because remember, this is still a new process. It's not that something was set in stone and there's only one way of getting in or out of the honors program. Uh, it is multifaceted, it does have the opportunity for us to tweak from year to year as, as we, as we evaluate. That was one of the things I did wanna mention, but I also wanted to mention what Mr. Ruski had brought up. As far as the criteria, when a student goes into the high school, leaving the middle school, the recommendations are data-driven recommendations. It's not simply that a student has an A. There are many students that have A's that are not recommended into the honors program at the high school. Uh, so they are looking at very specific criteria when they're making those recommendations. And that actually is something that was discussed at the honors meeting, as we look at how we recommend students as well, looking to adopt some of that practice. So do understand, this is something that we are working on, and we are taking a lot of things into consideration as far as how we are getting kids in, keeping them in, or exiting them if they are misplaced. So, I did wanna address that because those were comments that were.
And, and Mr. Hush, I appreciate that. My son, you know, went from the middle school to the high school and, and, you know, and, and, and for IH, he had to fill out an application and all that stuff. So understand that there, there are data-driven aspects of it, but the grades were weighted very heavily prior to the creation of a, of an honors test. And once again, looking at current data, the students that we have in tenth, eleventh, and twelfth, and the twelfth graders who are going to a lot of great schools, they got through the system primarily on the basis of entering honors through, right, grades as the criteria, along with teacher recommendation, and not an honors test. So if it ain't broke, don't fix it, is what I was, was what I was trying to get to. And we've introduced something that's created so much acrimony, so much division, and so many more questions than we, than we had to begin with.
And, and that's because the teachers that are teaching it, and, and again, you have to listen to the teachers, they're the ones in the trenches every day with them.
I am.
You know, they're, they're saying if we're having a true honors program, it's just like if we're addressing special needs children. We need to take care of children who are struggling, children who are excelling, and everybody in between. And so if we're gonna have a program, let's have a program with rigor, and let's address all of the kids' needs, not just say, let's put them in because of status.
I agree.
But let, let me let these gentlemen finish, and then we can ask more questions. Please. Mr. Clump?
Good evening, everyone. Everyone, Bob Clump, that Liberty principal. Just wanna echo some of the things that Mr. Hush had said, that we do have multiple measures at the seven, eight building. The departmentalization that's, that we're now starting out, uh, will help to, to shape some of the grading and those, uh, measures that we look at for sixth grade building. We have seven elementaries that we're evaluating all the different teachers. And, uh, again, grades are somewhat subjective. So our honors committee that we all sit on are taking a close look at that. Uh, the honors program isn't in its infancy, uh, we really haven't been around too long. As far as our honors, you know, I know my eighth grade consume, it's consisting of twenty-six percent of, of my student body, twenty percent in seventh grade. So we have access to honors. I think it's a diverse population. The diversity in the building is reflected and mirrored in our honors program, as well as all of our programming in the, in the building. Uh, so, you know, I, I really, I, I know that article, uh, the direction it was taking, uh, really, uh, stuck out i- in my mind, that it wasn't accurate. And I know Mr. Ruski had us just do some data mining, and, and I know Mr. Hush covered that data pretty clearly. Mr. Ruski has that data as well. So, uh, you know, again, I applaud, uh, some of the district initiatives we have to really, uh, get at some of the, the top students. And again, it's not excluding anyone, we have access to all that. And our, our tests, we're always looking at those tests as well, always refining. So the honors committee is doing that work. Uh, so I applaud the honors committee, the teachers, parents, all part of that program.
Well.
Do you, how, what percentage, uh, how many straight A students or A average students who didn't do well on the test were excluded from honors in the past year? Because that will also tell us, uh, if a kid is making the grade, and here's the, grades are subjective. Um, I, one of the things I look at, and I've, I've actually looked at the curriculum, look, for instance, for math in, in elementary school, we have a supervisor, we have a great program that's been in place for about, what, seven, eight years? And created a lot of structure in math, tremendous structure, the family letters, everything is very well laid out, including a lot of the grading criteria. So, and yet, a fifth grader going into sixth grade still has teacher recommendation, but the, but the biggest chunk of the evaluation is the test for math. So, once again, y- you know, grading may be somewhat subjective, they're always, they're different, you can always have slightly different rubrics, but there's a lot of stuff in there that's standardized. And I just feel like we're complicating things. And, so I'd like to know what that percentage is, if you all can find that, as you mine your data.
I, I think you'd be happy to know, the last committee meeting, we were talking about, um, the percentage of grades, um, across the three, Mr. Robertson. So, that's one of the things that we're looking at. Um, and remember, one of the most important pieces we're forgetting is writing. And in two of the subjects, the writing is the most important criteria. And anybody who doesn't think writing is the most important criteria that separates, um, students who are honors slash GNT kids and not, um, that's exactly what separates those kids. So, um, let me turn it over to Mr. Fitzgerald, please.
Xavier Fitzgerald, principal at Edison Middle School. Um, pertaining to the article, it mentioned several things, um, to Edison. Number one being schedule, another being curriculum alignment, and the other being homework. So I'm gonna take all those in the, in that order. Um, our schedule in the first year of implementing honors, twenty fifteen, sixteen, we were at a block schedule. We had ten periods of thirty-eight minutes, and at that point, we were able to facilitate five teams. Um, back in twenty fourteen, fifteen, when Mr. Ruski came aboard, we had a conversation about moving all of the middle schools to the same schedule. Um, we were not able to facilitate that in fifteen, sixteen. However, looking through fifteen, sixteen, we were able to, at that point, facilitate in sixteen, seventeen, that fifty-five minute schedule with seven periods. Um, no, it did not go as smooth as I thought it would be. Um, I thought it would just be a simple fix where you take the green and yellow team that were on, on one floor, the blue and orange that was on another floor, and the purple team. And you simply combined them, and at that point, you had larger teams, but they were aligned by hallways, they were aligned by floors. And that was done purposefully, so that way the students would not be confused about where their classrooms were or where their lockers would be. Again, we are, we are transitioning students from a fifth grade environment with self-contained element into a middle school environment. And Edison can be a little bit frightening for those eleven and twelve-year-olds coming into the building. Um, at that point, like I said, we took smaller teams, we made them larger because we were, at that point, simulating what Liberty and Roosevelt had as a schedule. Um, as we learned some years ago, believe it or not, when I went to, uh, six years ago, when I went to a block schedule as a pilot, the following year, Liberty and Roosevelt also tried to implement, or were looking at trying to implement, that block schedule. It did not fit their school because of their programming. And so now, believe it or not, I found myself in the same situation, where it, that fifty-five minute schedule did not fit my building for the program. So I now, over the ye- over this past marking period, or two marking periods, have taken a look at everything that Edison has as far as programming is concerned, and what Liberty and Roosevelt has as programming. We are moving more closer to their programming, and recommendations are already in front of Mr. Ruski about these things. So that way, we can align not only our teams, but also our honors program and our HAP program across the building going into twenty seventeen, eighteen. Um, as far as curricular alignment, when we come to curricular alignment, um, you know, there was a buzz that, that on one team, one team was doing something else as opposed to another team, and that's not accurate. Um, what's accurate is, is that we, as teachers or educators, we teach the standards. Um, we did implement our HAP, I mean, our, our, um, honors program. And when we did that, everybody that was in the sixth grade is teaching the same standard in ELA, science, social studies, and mathematics. Now, when you get to the HAP, I mean, the, the honors program, naturally, those, those teachers will offer a level of enrichment to their particular classrooms because of that status of being in honors classroom. Um, as far as our HAP program, our HAP program for a number of years has been infused through our ELA program. It has never been just a separate outside source or classroom, it has always gone through our ELA classroom. So they take the ELA curriculum, along with the HAP curriculum, and they infuse the two. Um, so again, those concepts and standards that are taught in one sixth grade, even on the honors level, is also taught in our general education level and into our special education level. So it's not that we're teaching different standards, that we're teaching different concepts. At that point in time, the, the honors teachers are enriching and advancing their lessons to meet those students' challenges and needs in those classrooms. Um, as far as homework is concerned, one of the things that, uh, at Edison, we had a different type of schedule. And our different type of schedule led to us having math, language arts, but also science and social studies on an A, B schedule. Now, again, at that point, my teachers on an A, B schedule in science and social studies were not used to giving homework on a daily basis as they my math and language arts. Once they were able to go in fifteen, sixteen, and sixteen, seventeen, the ability, or sixteen, seventeen, the ability to give the homework every day, at that point, I had to come up with a rule of thumb, because the board, the Board of Education already has a policy in place, ambiguous, but it is a policy. And at this point in time, we are working on a middle school guideline. Research-based rule of thumb is very simple, ten minutes for whatever grade level you are on. So for Edison, if it's a sixth grade, it's sixty minutes. That is exclusive of the reading and, the reading requests that the ELA teachers have in place. They've always had that in place since I've been at Edison, that is thirty minutes of re- reading a night. Um, but, that is the rule of thumb that we follow. The issue is, is that some parents feel that there is four hours of homework given in one team and one hour of homework given on another team. And at that point, I have made it a point to speak to every team, speak to every teacher by department about the level of homework and how much time it should take by team, so there is no discrepancy. You will get that discrepancy because some students will finish the homework that is outlined in the hour, and you may get some students that will finish it in four hours. I'll give you a perfect example. There was an example of a parent called me or emailed me about a child having four hours of homework. I then went into the, um, the online website that we have for homework. I looked at everything for the four teachers that the child had. The child, for that night, had to study, had to study off the study guide. And I took that child four hours because that was the homework. Someone else may have taken that study guide, spent ten minutes on one, spent ten minutes on another, and spent ten minutes on another, and would have finished that homework in thirty minutes. But it took that child an hour or four hours, or however long it took the child to finish. Naturally, I brought the team in and I asked them to explain to me exactly what your homework policy. And they were to regurgu- they were able to regurgitate exactly what I said, rule of thumb, ten minutes for the grade level, sixty minutes with the exclusion of reading being every night, thirty minutes optional. All right?
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald.
Just wanna point one thing out, that you, Mr. Robertson, you make an indication that if you're not in honors, you will not make it to college. And that is not a true statement. You're saying, you're saying if so, you did, you said, you said if you don't make.
Never, never, never said that.
Mr. Robertson, and I'm Mr. Schwartzbaum. Want to finish, please, Mr. Schwartzbaum?
You, you're, 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 you're making an underlying, and I, an underlying assumption that I believe is incorrect. First of all, you said, oh, the pipeline. The, there's an underlying assumption that those children who, who are in honors based upon solely upon grades, that if they took the, if they took the test, they wouldn't have had, they wouldn't have been in there. That, that's an erroneous assumption, you have no basis for that. And the fact is that the, that there are different criteria, and they're working through it. And test-taking, other than test-taking, objective test-taking, is, is usually a criteria, just like the SATs, the ACTs, AP, that is part of, of getting into an honors. In not only testing on data, that, on subject matter that you've been taught, but it's also on other things. So, and everyone's on the same level playing field. If people were not on the same level playing field, you'd have a point. Everyone is on the same playing field.
Ah, they're not. I'm glad you brought that up, because there are a couple of things. Number one, I never, ever said that if you don't get into honors, you're, I'm implying you can't get into college. What I'm saying is, looking at the data for the high level, the number of high-level performers that we have produced, who came through an honors system without a test, where they made the grade, A averages is what got them into honors, they have proven to be successful. So there was no reason to introduce a test, that's number one. Number two, the problem with the test is twofold. One, actually, a lot of schools don't, a lot of top performing schools don't use the test. Number two, don't use a test, they use the grades. And I even asked, uh, Mr. A, our, our supervisor, he tells a story often about how his sons performed at different levels, but one did well, but one was gifted in math. I asked him, I said, Mr. A, were they both in honors? He said, yeah. I said, did they take a test? He said, no, they didn't, they got it on the basis of grades. My point is. My point is that the grades, uh, making the grade every day is what a child is, is literally graded on, judged on, and what that child and their parents are looking at as the measure, the daily, monthly, weekly, monthly, yearly measure for their success. And so, that should be the question, that's number one. Number two, uh, to make it clear, you don't have to be in honors to get into college. There are a lot of great, I never said that. To, no, 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 you're missing a story. Now, let's get to the fairness. Um, because Mr. Ruski was trying, made it clear that he was trying to kind of force honors and GNT together, and yeah, I believe we need to fix GNT, but what I'm saying is, the best practice is that you have a separate GNT track, and you could have even GNT honors. And then you could have non-GNT honors. Your GNT kids are normally the top one percent to three percent, at most five percent. While you could have honors, kids who are in honors, who've made the grade, who are in the top fifteen to twenty, sometimes, sometimes even twenty-five percent. And actually, Mr. O'Neill, Mr. Ruski's predecessor, had talked about what he did in Chatham and how they opened it up. And we've seen here that when we did it on the basis of grades, we produced more kids going into AP, more kids going into high school honors, more ki- we, we did really well, we were doing quite well without the test. That's number one. Number two, the fairness of the test. The test, uh, as kids have told us many times right here, and I have kids in the schools, and I've talked to their friends, I've talked to their parents, as well as what we've been told right here. The test, particularly for math, um, uh, presents problems that they may not have had before, that they haven't had before in many cases. And I suggested there that if we're gonna do a test, do like we do for quarterlies, do like we do for SATs, do like we do for all these other tests, provide study guides, practice problems, give them a roadmap where they can show that they can do well when they actually know the material. And there are school systems that don't even allow you to be tested if you haven't learned the materials you're being tested on, except for GNT. And last point, as we're, as we're. And last point, as we're, as we're, as we're working through what's fair and what's not, it is true that the, that the general, that the standard courses and the honors courses parallel in terms of the topics and the content. They do not parallel anywhere close for reasons, if that makes sense, for honors, in terms of rigor. So what happens is, once a kid is on the general track, it's tough to get into the honors track, particularly with math, because a kid in the honors class is getting, and this came from teachers, by the way, is getting, maybe getting what's called challenge problems on a daily basis, while the kid in the general class, where the teacher may be teaching to five different levels of performance or functioning, may get a challenge problem once a week or once every two weeks. So it's not a level playing field. If you miss the boat the first time, it's hard as hell to get in there. I heard we have 10 kids moved over. When you look at the percentage that those kids represent, that's minute. So it is not a level playing field. So what I'm saying is, if you give a test, give a study guide. SAT has it, quarterly tests, we do have it, everything else has it. I prefer to eliminate the test, but if you're going to do it, make it fair.
What percentage of a class should be in honors?
Those who make straight As, that is, A average in the course, should have a chance to get into honors, and those who have Bs in honors should not have to test to stay there. Give the kids a chance to prove themselves. Give them a chance to continue to make the grade. Give them a chance to do what Mr. Rutske promised us, and that is to challenge kids at their highest level without frustrating them, because this mode of, 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 this process is frustrating the hell out of a lot of kids and their parents.
Mr. Robertson, just a reminder with the language.
Okay. Gentlemen, you going to stick around for a little while?
I actually have a question, Mr. Rutske. The principals are here, you're the educational professionals here. When you're assessing a student based on grades, embedded in that grade are test grades as well, because you have tests within the classroom.
They're formative and summative assessments.
So you still have testing?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, Mr. Robertson, so they're still being tested, the grades do include testing grades. But I don't believe in teaching-
So use the existing test.
I don't believe in teaching to a test, and I don't, while study guides are graded and all of that, I think if the students have broad-based education, broad-based learning, they should be able to do well on any test.
Okay.
I don't, I don't think you should teach a test. You shouldn't sit in the classroom and study for a test all day long.
All right. So what we're going to do now is-
Use their quarterlies as their test.
We're going to, Ms. Mordecai, let's move on. Gentlemen, if you can just stay for a little bit longer, that'd be great.
Thank you for coming.
We're going to go ahead and move on to the HIV incident report. Okay, any comments or any questions on the report?
No, thank you.
Mr. Schwartzbaum?
Just note that it looks like Hazel actually has a very high incidence of HIV in this, in the last couple of weeks.
Well, again, it varies. You know, there's not one school in particular that kind of stands out. The issue is, it could be a situation that a couple of kids are having a bad day, bad week, so we're looking at the overall report. Anything on this? Okay, just a couple of recognitions, and then we'll get to the, to the agenda. Young man by the name of Austin Bartolo, he's obviously a student here in the Honors Wind Ensemble. He was selected for the All Eastern Band at the National Association for Music Educators. He's going to Atlantic City to perform in April. It is one of the highest honors that a student can receive, and he is going to be representing our district, going down and competing with other kids across the state. Really a tremendous award for Austin, his family, and all his teachers who have worked with him over the years. Just want to give a little update on a couple of things. Kindergarten registration is open, and we are taking the appointments, meeting with parents and registering students for next school year. Lot of concerts going on around the district. I know all of you heard about the cheerleaders doing so well, seventh overall nationally out of 31 teams. Really, really fine performance what they did. Congratulations to the coaches. Olivia Delspina is brand-new this year, guidance counselor here in the high school, is a head coach. Really tremendous work on her part, and really great parent group there, there's helping the kids and helping the coaches, so congratulations to them. They actually flew back this morning from Florida, saw all good stuff. And some of you saw that Victor Lopez broke the record for the school, first time, they have 127 wins accumulated, really a tremendous accomplishment there as well. As far as our athletics, the girls' basketball team is still rolling really well, 17, you know, the county tournament, they defeated Millburn, and really, really doing well. The boys' basketball team has really made a push here at the end of the year. They started off really struggling and have really had a nice turnaround. They've run several games in a row above 500 now. The girls' swimming, as you know, were league champs the first time. They ended their season 10-1-1. Boys' swimming, 5-6. Bowling, 2-14. Wrestling, very similar to the boys' basketball, where they started off a little slow, but really came on strong. Congratulations to all those kids. They ended up 12-6, and the hockey was 4-16. So I'll be doing some work with the hockey parents and kids, and coming back to have some conversations with you about some different things with the hockey. But a lot of really nice accomplishments, and I just want to congratulate the kids and the coaches, and certainly thank the parents for their support. It goes a long way in this. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Rutske. Okay. Now it's time for the public agenda. Are there any questions from the public on agenda items only? Please state your name, address, and there's a time limit of three minutes, so that everyone will have an opportunity to speak.
My name is Deirdre Oliver. I live at 43 Conforty, number 25, and my comments and questions are related to the document concerning foster care and educational stability. First of all, I want to commend the board on preparing such a policy. You know, it's a cause that's near and dear to me. I have a nonprofit organization here in town called The Empowerment Zone, and we work with teams that are aging out of foster care. The questions that I have, I have three questions. I'd like to know what services are put in place for these students when they enter into the school district. Historically, these students come from districts that have fewer resources than here in West Orange, and so I want to know if there's any tutoring, speech therapy, or any type of peer mentoring programs for this population. My second question, does, is the district receiving funding from the school district of origin? I know that's part of the Title I program that says that they should receive funding as they move from district to district. And lastly, my question, who is the foster care liaison for the district? And how can I get in contact with that person?
Thank you, Ms. Oliver.
I'm Elizabeth Ron, 546 Valley Road. I'm sorry, I'm not wearing red, but I'm with each one of you that are in the back and every single staff of the district. So my black today is red. In regards, gosh, I came primarily because some information was given that was incorrect, and I wanted to make sure that it's accurate, the information given, and it's in regards of the rate of the kids with special needs. In that regards, there is over 100 case law to be exact, 137 since 2010 to 2016, to be, 17 to be more exact, okay? That indicates totally the contrary, according to the law, okay? In that regards, a student's count as a dropout, that's the question that was asked in the Supreme Court of United States. Dropouts as a dropout, if she or he doesn't graduate at four or six years, absolutely not. As long as she or he is attending a school, she or he will be continuing a student, just the classification, continuing a student. If she doesn't receive a regular diploma, he or she doesn't receive a regular diploma at fourth or sixth years, she will be included in the respective numerator for those calculation. Then, as the Supreme Court indicated as a conclusion, again, overall, the changes to graduation are actually changing how we calculate and publicly report graduation rate for accountability purpose. There is no change in the ways that a student with disability can exit high school if the student meets requirement, including those proposed by the IEP team. A district can award then a regular diploma anytime until they are age of 21 years old, or whatever, 21 or 22, whatever comes first. District graduation rate will be calculated for accountability and reporting purpose at four and six years, but that does not prelude or prevent a student with a disability from continuing longer if the IEP team determines that is what they need to happen to provide. Most important, at this point, I have 40 seconds, most important at this point, a student with or without disability is a student, they deserve their respect, and we cannot just always say that a student with disability are the one who are, who put down any rates, score, or anything that you want to present in this location. There, I've heard it so many times. So what is the district have to be indicating, I think, is what is more important in the long run is whether the student receives FAP and the needed special services that the student need. Every single student of this district deserves their respect, and to use their law accordingly as the law stipulates. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ron.
Hi, Rachel Gordon, 8 Meeker Street. I hope some of you, most of you are aware that the Assembly voted today, Ed vote, on ACR 215 to overturn the park graduation requirements. Of course, that doesn't mean that they are overturned yet, but, and I know that we have to follow mandates as they are, but Mr. Rutske said that grade eight, while yes, when they get to 10th grade, would, or before they graduate during the current law, would be required. They are not required. If they want to, if their parents want to refuse for them in grade eight, they can, and I hope that that is made clear in the letter. I also know that last month, I asked what the refusal, you know, procedure was going to be, and you said you were going to say at this meeting, so I'm asking what the refusal procedure is going to be for those people who are going to refuse the park. As I have, I also wanted to comment that while I, as a member of the honors committee last year, and while I do appreciate that you guys are going to hopefully make some changes and listen to Mr. Robertson and make the test less important, as of last year, it was more than 50% to, between the written and the test, and it was very hard if you were just, especially in fifth grade, if you couldn't even get to the teacher recommendation if you didn't have certain requirements. And so I hope that that is cleared up and we make it less of an onerous thing on testing. And so that was my other point. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sue Freeval, 10 Ridge Avenue. Also asking about the ESEA plan. Says that there'll be training of staff in regards to placement into programs or graduation requirements. What placement into programs do we rely on the park for? And also, the letter is supposed to tell parents what the impact of test refusal. What are you going to tell parents the impact is when it seems like there really isn't any? Also, getting on to agenda items, which you guys still haven't gotten on to, the substitute list, it includes teachers and paraprofessionals. I don't see any spec ed teachers, and I don't see a social worker, which is important because under number four, leaves of absence, you've got a couple of special education teachers, you've got the school occupational therapist who's been out since December, that's an amended leave, which means you've already approved her leave previously, and we're still waiting on those OT services to start. You have a social worker, social workers frequently do CST duties and provide related services. Where is the substitute social worker that's going to go along with that person? You guys have an obligation to make sure there are no gaps in services here. If you're approving these leaves, you should know how those services are being provided. Same goes with the paraprofessionals. And yes, getting, getting to the graduation rate, I'd really like- (whistle) I'm sorry. Okay. I'd really like to know, like, you all have my email address, I'd like someone to email me a citation that says how the 18 to 21 program students actually do count against us. I'd like to see some citation of that. And Mr. Rutske portrays it as a choice, that the district chooses to put these kids into a program we choose to have. The 18 to 21 program, unless there's another 18 to 21 program I don't know about, the 18 to 21 program is a legal entitlement. These are students who are found eligible until the age of 21. If we didn't provide that program, we'd have to send eligible kids to an 18 to 21 program somewhere else. So this is not a friendly thing we do as a favor, this is a cost savings to the district to do it in district. So that is not a choice by the district that's a favor, that is a decision by the IEP team, which they're entitled to by law, and it's decided by the IEP team and the parents. It is not a favor, and I'd really like to make sure that that is clear. This is not just something West Orange does that's different from other districts. The only thing we do differently is we have our own program. All districts are obligated to educate eligible kids up to age 21. Thank you.
Mrs. Dukes. Good evening, Marcia Dukes, 1 Clearou Terrace. I'm here to respond to the ad from last week in the West Orange Chronicle. One of the points I would like to find out is, it was stated that some of the things were inaccurate. I'm speaking as a parent and also speaking for my son, and I can clearly say, his feelings were not inaccurate. What he's going through is not inaccurate, so I would like to just make sure that that's clear. The second thing I'd like to bring up is that while we're saying that we're trying to align to both Liberty and Roosevelt, my question is then, why do we need teams? Because Liberty or Roosevelt, both of them do not have teams. And I think a lot of the concerns came from teams blaming teams, one team being smarter than the other team. My next concern would be, I know we are talking about programs where people are on committees. I'm not on a committee, but I have a lot to say. How do I get heard? My concern is, why can't we have a parent forum that these committee members, and I don't know who they are and who they make up, but I need to know who they are, and I'd like to make sure that my concerns are heard, because I have schoolchildren in this district, and I need to make sure that we're caring for those issues. And then my third thing is about the curricula. So while yes, every standard may be there, but every teacher does things differently. So we definitely have to look at not just teachers, but students, teachers, and parents, and find out really what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Dukes.
Jennifer Beazer, 82 Lawrence Avenue. I just wanted to make a comment about the EIRC, if I have those letters right, presentation. At the end, when the gentleman was asked about what kind of parent input he would be looking for, he said something to the effect that parents will be able to get off their chest what they need to get off their chest. And while parents often need to get something off their chest, there are a lot of parents who have very valid concerns and thoughts, and I hope that the input is going to get in to this process. Listening to the presentation, while he talked about looking at- Listening to the presentation, while he talked about looking at sort of best practices and how the in-class support model worked, it seemed like it was focused very heavily on a compliance audit and budget issues. And I hope that as the board directs them in how they're spending their energies, that you're going to be looking at really what our students need, to be sure our students are getting what they need. And one thing I would suggest is that we look at whether our students' social and emotional needs are being met here in school. Students with anxiety, depression, other psychological issues, I think that that's somewhere where we need some work in our schools, and I think that could tie into maybe the graduation rate issue, where you have students who are falling off the track, losing credits, and this is additional support that could, that could really help them, even if they're not classified students. Thank you.
Joseph Dukes, one Clearu Terrace. I'm not sure if this is on the agenda or not, I don't have one in front of me, but people are not going to floor coming in. The last meeting that we, that I attended here, I think around the twenty-third or so, I mentioned that I had a complaint. I submitted an HIV complaint to the high school. I am waiting on the results of that complaint. I would like to know where we are at this point with the complaint and what we're doing about it going forward.
Okay, Mr. Dukes, that's not something that's on the agenda tonight. Mr. Rutzke will speak with you afterwards. Thank you, seeing no one else, Mr. Rutzke, please respond.
Mr. Mrs. Oliver, the foster care, I work from the bottom here. Cheryl Butler is our liaison. She's here in this building, she is the director of the guidance department, so she will be able to help you, and she'll actually be able to tell you all the services that are offered to students when they come into the district. She would be the best resource to help you with that. If you need help, I can connect you with her tomorrow. The other question about the funding, yes, we do get it from the origin, where the chow came from. Absolutely, we do. Mr. Ron, if you would just share your information that you have with, with Ms. Mendez and myself, just put an email and send it to us, we will certainly look at that and get back to you on that. Ms. Gordon, yeah, we are, I am aware of the Assembly, and the park letter obviously indicates what the law is right now, and if that changes, obviously, will change with that, and what's required and what's not required. As far as refusal, there's nothing different from last year, that letter's coming out. I shared it with the board today, and it'll be coming out possibly tomorrow, Wednesday at the latest, and that way you'll be able to see and have time to do what needs to be done. Ms. Frevel, the, again, the refusal is the same question from Ms. Gordon, that'll be coming out, you'll have the opportunity to do that. As far as the sub-list there, just because somebody's not listed on the sub-list, or on the employment list, or whatever list it is, it doesn't mean that we're not looking for the person, so it's very possible. The graduation requirements, and your comment, there was never a time up here where I said that it chooses the favor, it was a clear statement about that it negatively affects the graduation rate. And I'm very well aware, if we didn't have it, and we had kids that needed the eighteen to twenty-one-year-old program, we would have that program, have to have those children, students go somewhere else. I also clearly said that I would never recommend that program go away. It was clearly a statement about the graduation requirements and what goes into the graduation requirements, which is part of the eighteen to twenty-one-year-old program. Ms. Dukes, never was there any conversation specifically about your son, there was a lot of information in the article, had nothing to do with your son. Your son's perspective is his perspective, and we respect that. The idea about teams, it's something that is a very important middle school concept, and the transition to Edison, coming from elementary school, is an important facet to have teams. The idea behind middle school teams is that you have one group of teachers who have time set aside to meet specifically about the kids that they're working with, and to talk about different things as far as kinds of assessments that are being done, et cetera. So it's a very important part of the middle school concept. Ms. Beazer, as far as the presentation, one of the things that I absolutely stressed with all of the groups that are looking at is to make sure that they're listening, and those that can't attend, to have a questionnaire or a survey that they can really fill out. And I said earlier, trying to make sure that we look at the patterns, but also respect the individual comments, and kind of look at those, and hoping that by identifying maybe in this school, they're doing something, in this school, they're not, so we can provide the help, so we get that consistency and that effectiveness across all the schools and all the programs. But yeah, and the social, emotional needs, clearly that's something that we always need to look into, and every year it seems to get a little more challenging with what kids are expected to do. And Mr. Dukes, I'll be glad to talk to you after the meeting, or we can certainly talk tomorrow about the status of what you're talking about. That's all.
One more thing, Mr. Rutzke, Mrs. Dukes asked about parent forums or committee members, if she could get in touch with.
Yeah, there are, there are committee members from each school that represent the different schools, so we can certainly let her know who those committee members are.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay, moving on.
Just one comment in reference to Mrs. Beazer. Without going into too much detail, I agree with you and have experienced firsthand that we need to do a better job in terms of making sure teachers and guidance have the proper training and support to recognize and address the needs, particularly when it comes to anxiety and depression. And those are actually at a much higher prevalence rate for teens than the areas that we've got many processes and systems in place. You know, we have very regimented processes to deal with IEPs, but those who may not fall within that framework, given that, I don't know if you saw the Time Magazine article about the epidemic rate of anxiety and depression among teens in America, and how it often goes, they become invisible as kids are trying to cope with it, and not necessarily, and we have wonderful teachers, we have wonderful counselors, I want to make sure, though, that they're getting the proper training to be able to recognize and intervene, and then know what that intervention really should be. But I hear you loud and clear.
Mr. Robertson, you may not be aware, but guidance goes for training every year, extensive. Actually, we approve it every year.
I understand, I'm just saying from firsthand experience, we could, we need to do better.
Okay, and we're also evaluating the guidance department as well, it's one of our goals. So we're looking at, we're looking at a lot of things, we're really busy as a district this year with evaluations. Okay, if I may continue, Mrs. Lab, board policies?
Okay, we're going to need a motion to move those, please, Madam President, as Mr. Charles likes to say.
Thank you, Mr. Robertson.
I'll second. Okay, moving forward then. Foster care and educational stability, five one one eight point two. Thank you, Ms. Oliver, by the way, for bringing this up, and the answer to your question regarding supports in place can be found under roles and responsibilities. I assume you have the policy? Okay. And then, of course, when you speak with Ms. Butler, she can give you specifics, okay? But anyway, regarding this policy, the Commissioner of Education issued a memorandum on October fourth, two thousand and sixteen, requiring, requiring schools to develop policy and regulations regarding foster care and educational stability for compliance with the requirements of ESA. The policy nine two seven one point one, board member use of social media networks and other forms of electronic communication, this is expanding our governance for ourselves, and these policies will, of course, be available, actually, I think they're already available on the website for first reading, and assuming they pass, they'll be available for second, for public viewing as well. Any questions from the board on these? Okay.
I think I'll wait for Mr. Rutzke to answer my question, but you have to find it for Ms. Butler, and it's a piggyback to what Mrs. Oliver brought up. On page one, number three, it refers to the services and supports. I'd be interested as well to find out what additional services and supports, and our foster population includes our, our students who are in group homes or homeless students as well? Both, okay. Thank you.
Mrs. Lab?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Vice President Schwartzbaum?
Yes.
President Mordecai?
Yes.
May I have a motion, please, for personnel, including the addendum?
I'll move one through four with the addendum.
I'll second.
Thank you. I'd like to recognize retirement, thirty-one years, Catherine Welter, West Orange High School. Thank you for your service. Okay, and... Let's see. Mr. Rutzke, the interim assistant principal position, is that, that's, we're aggressively looking still? Okay. And I think I had one more. As far as the clubs, do all elementary schools still have a math club? I noticed that there's a switch to ceramics club and Lego learners for Hazel. Do we still have math clubs?
No, it's, those clubs are built into the contract where they can have different clubs of their choice. They can always run a math club, but these are the ones that are part of the contract and get money for doing the club.
Okay, great, thank you. Does anyone else have any questions on personnel?
I have, uh...
Sure.
I'd just like to thank Dr. Carr for joining our district for the time that she had been here. She did a wonderful job at Hazel and at Washington, and our students and our staff are quite indebted to her. She is a true professional, and we'll certainly miss her. And also, I just, kudos to Kelly Elementary, they're having a sign language club, I think that's kind of cool for the kids. So that's all I got on that, so.
Yes, I also add my thanks to Dr. Carr, she's been great at both Hazel and Washington.
I also want to recognize Mr. Sternstein, he's an excellent art teacher, very inspirational and tough, but he's very, very good.
Yes, yes, thank you. Okay, Mr. Calavano, real call?
Mrs. Lab?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Vice President Schwartzbaum?
Yes.
President Mordecai?
Yes.
May I have a motion, please, for curriculum and instructions?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion by the board?
No. Good.
Mr. Robertson?
No, thank you.
Okay. I just have one comment, I'm glad to see that we are working on curriculum for freshman seminar. I know this was put in place several years ago when we started the small learning communities. Kudos to our teachers writing curriculum for that.
Oh, I did have a question on that, I forgot. Mr. Rutzke, one of the things we had talked about as we looked at the curriculum for the freshman seminar, and the whole idea behind it being that they're, it's helping to prepare kids for the skills they need in high school, there were two things we discussed before. One is the fact that some of the kids aren't able to take it until their second semester, so they're already in the midst of, they're already in the fray by the time they start to get the skills. And I wondered, is there an effort at all, just as we are looking at guidance K through twelve, and how to start early college and career planning, is there a way to integrate some of these skills, particularly the project management and prioritization into the earlier grades, even starting at sixth grade? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Calavano, real call?
Mrs. Lab?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Vice President Schwartzbaum?
Yes.
President Mordecai?
Yes.
May I have a vote, please, for, a motion, please, for finance?
I'll move special services, one through five, and finance, one through six, with the addendum.
And also, the contract with EIRC?
Yes.
To conduct the special ed audit?
Number seven, under business office. Yes, thank you.
I'll move that.
Any discussion by the, I'm sorry, second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Any discussion by the board? Seeing none, Mr. Calavano?
Mrs. Lab?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Vice President Schwartzbaum?
Yes.
President Mordecai?
Yes.
May I have a motion, please, for reports?
I'll move that.
Thank you. Any second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion by the board? This is for the HIV report? Mr. Calavano?
Mrs. Lab?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Vice President Schwartzbaum?
Yes.
President Mordecai?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, now it's time for a report from board members and board president. Mr. Robertson, let's start with you.
Sure. I've attended quite a few things. First, we already, we praised our girls' basketball team, but I wanted to make a special note that Coach Kenice Williams did something very special with that event, and so did her booster club, great booster club, because they created by inviting in mountaintop girls' teams and recreation department girls' teams, they were starting and celebrating the girls, the women and girls' athletics day. They were creating a sense, really, of culture, of a girls' basketball culture, and a sense of family and camaraderie, and it really showed in the number of folks who showed up for the game, and just the spirit throughout the game, and I just want to commend her for that. That was, that was pretty exceptional, and we can learn from that.
It was really good, and it was well attended.
Yeah, wow, that was something. Second, I attended the guidance department college night for juniors. The presentation, I'm not going to go through all of it, but it was very, very comprehensive. For the most part, I think it was very, very well done, great information. The only thing I'd suggest, though, is, one, it's information that by the second semester junior year, when it comes to your college search process, application process, financial aid, and understanding PSAT and SAT scores, I think these are things that need to be introduced in the freshman, for freshman sophomore. Some freshman sophomore families did show up, but it's, you know, getting an earlier start and helping families and kids with that planning would be really good. So we just had to rename the night and invite everybody. Two, just want to look at, you know, how we can make a couple of tweaks with it. One is, they, there was extensive talk about the college tours, but no one mentioned the college open houses, and you can actually get fees waived for applications, often by attending a college open house, as well as the student having an opportunity to present her or his self, and really start selling to admissions and to department heads at these types of events. And there's some other recommendations I'll have, but I'll submit that later.
And also same decision, you also have the opportunity for same-day decision as well.
Same-day decision, and a lot of them have special education receptions that may happen before or in conjunction with the open house events to really serve, you know, those kids and families. But I'll make the other recommendations later, it's already been a long evening. Also attended, or a bunch of us attended, the Black History Month Dinner, that was, once again, phenomenal. I don't know what's in the water in West Orange, but man, our folks came out, and the teachers who supported it, the kids, the talent is amazing. I'm blown away every time by the spirit and the passion, it was a great celebration.
The band was very, very good, and so was the step team, the boys and the girls' step team.
Off the chain, and then the girls, I'm sorry, we have our own, like, little In Vogue, they could go start their own Destiny's Child or In Vogue, some of the, it was amazing. And the chamber breakfast, the mayor's state-of-the-town breakfast was pretty awesome, and it was so wonderful, you know, some of the kids up there, I knew like Andre, Rosu, and Peyton Smith, since they were... were in second or third grade through scouts, and to be able to watch them really develop into these pretty incredible men, and as well as Sophia Adelson, and see her grow up.
Just a reminder, Mr. Robertson...
They were just pretty cool.
No names? They're minors?
Oh, I apologize.
First names only if you really have to say a name.
My apologies. Bryce was watching. Just a lot of really wonderful, high-achieving, great-spirited, just wonderful-nated, wonderful, wonderful young people. PR committee, couple of quick takeaways. We had a meeting, Mr. Schwartzbaum, Cynthia Cunningham, and Perry Bashkov. Cynthia and Perry continue to do an awesome, awesome job. Cynthia is, I don't know when she sleeps, you know, just cranking out the articles and the work and the ideas, and Perry's phenomenal. He's taken us to another level in social media. Some of the things we all agreed on that could be done, though, we do need to drive more traffic to the website, have content, more video and photo content, have a place for that at the website, people really connect with that. And we talked also about the opportunity, and I think Cynthia's working on this right now, to promote the work done, the money saved for the reregistration process. That was a big win, and well done by Mr. Rutske, leading that charge, and we hadn't done that in years, well done. And there's also an opportunity to really support our guidance department and to promote our school. We saw today the engineering achievements. There's so many incredible things happening in engineering, computer science, the IMS program, the IH program, the civics program, and we need to promote these. And, you know, some know, my wife works at FDU, and I've gotten to talk to admissions folks, career folks, FDU and Seton Hall, and some of the schools, some of the districts are actually putting together kits that they send to them to help sell them. Well, we have stuff to sell, and I think that we need to support guidance in terms of getting the word out about the incredible stuff we do, not only through articles, but look at what sort of collateral and videos and content we can provide, student stories, you know, whether it's Sarah, who's in, you know, China, doing NYU China, and, you know, science and engineering, as well as Chinese, and stuff like that.
I think we actually already have quite a few articles like that. But Miss Rupson, do you have a copy of the deliverables report from...
I'll email it to you. I just had, like, five quick points.
Okay.
And the last was, it would help for any PTAs who are out there, make sure that you're posting as much of the content from the events and activities that you do as possible, because then Perry goes and takes that, and he can, you know, utilize that content at the district site and all in other places, and really help to drive kind of a viral energy around that. So he looks forward to doing that. And that's it. I went to a bunch of other stuff. Oh, the arts, I forgot to mention, the PTA Reflections Arts Program, and the theme was "What is Your Story?", great work on display, some great performances, and it's just wonderful to honor the work done by our kids with the support of teachers. And Lee Sutton is a counsel of PTA efforts, and Lee Sutton and her team did a really phenomenal job. It was a very special event and very special effort that gives our kids a chance to really express themselves.
It was a very great night. It's the second year that they're doing it, so I'm glad to see that it's continuing.
Absolutely. And the only other thing, and this is just a question, I'd like to know, as I did the... Was meeting with some of the folks at different colleges, I found that some... I also found in one of our... One of the high school kits, more information about how high schools are funding their efforts, how high schools and districts are funding their efforts. The northern region schools, for instance, got fifty percent, forty percent of their thirty-eight-team athletic program underwritten by Under Armour, and another ten percent put into escrow. So on that note, I'd like to know how... Where are we on our fund development effort, because there are a lot of great success stories out there, and hundreds of thousands to millions of dollars to be had to build out our programs and save our taxpayers some money.
Thank you, Mr. Robertson. Mr. Schwartzbaum?
I want to congratulate all the teams, and it was really nice to see our students be recognized at the mayor's annual event.
Yes, it was a great breakfast, great morning, a very proud moment for all of us. Mrs. Lab?
Thanks. Saturday morning, I represent the legislative... The twenty-seventh Legislative District for the School Board Association, and we had a meeting Saturday in Trenton. Obviously, there was grave concern among the membership regarding the new appointment of the Secretary of Education on the federal level. We are quite concerned about continued funding, implementation of the IDEA, considering she thought it was up to the states, where actually it's a federal criteria. So we're really very concerned about where that's going to go. Additionally, the State Board of Education... I'm sorry?
It's going to be a tough four years.
The State Board of Education voted against Governor Christie's proposal to lower the standards for charter school teachers and administrators, which is quite unique for the State Board of Education to vote against the sitting governor. What the sitting governor has now proposed or is about to implement is a change of the president of the State Board of Education. Big surprise. So, anyway, that's all the fun news I have, and just to correct my colleague, it's Cynthia Cumming, not Cunningham. I live on Cunningham Drive, she's Cynthia Cunningham, so it's late, we all kind of make mistakes. I just want to clear it up for the record. That's all I got.
Okay. Just want to add my kudos to all of our student athletes for great job, great season over the past few weeks, the girls' basketball, the boys' basketball, everyone, and to young Victor Lopez. I know his older brother because he graduated with my sons, and I always refer to him as, you know, Jeffrey's little brother. He's now made his own name. I won't call him Jeffrey's little brother anymore. He's made his name. But I also wanted to add that, in addition, we... Mr. Robertson and myself attended leadership training for school boards last Saturday, which was very informative. It was a training for board presidents and vice presidents, but Mr. Robertson came along. And, you know, it's very interesting, when you meet board presidents and vice presidents from other districts, they have so much information to share, so many best practices, and they showed quite a few videos of board meetings gone wild, and that's for another meeting. I'll report that in another meeting. It'll really extend this meeting. But it's interesting to hear what other districts are going through, and in particular, there's so many districts who recently just settled their contracts, some after three years, or four years, or five years. So the... It's... We're not alone, and it's sad to say that, but we're not alone in the funding issue statewide. And to that event, also, as a president of the Essex County School Board Association, we will be hosting a state school funding discussion here in district with Sheila Oliver, but it will be for board members only. But just to let you know that we are aggressively always advocating in Trenton, not just for funding, but for curricula as well and other resources from Trenton. Mr. Calavano?
The next board meeting?
Oh, okay. I have a motion for the next board meeting, March twentieth, and also, we have a residency hearing on the fifteenth. I know from looking at social media from time to time that it always gets mentioned that we don't do anything about residency. We actually have residency hearings quite often, and we have one in two days. That's it. Motion to adjourn? Adjourn, please.
Do we need to add the other hearing?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Do we need to add the other hearing?
Yes. I'm sorry, what's the other hearing?
It may be advertised.
We don't have another hearing. It's just the February fifteenth residency hearing, and then the following, March twentieth board meeting. I'm sorry, I apologize. Petitions and hearings of citizens? Oh, wow. I'm going on fumes here. I almost forgot.
Hi, my name is Susan Pasquale. I live at twenty-two Overlook Avenue. I'm here tonight in support of the teachers. I lived in West Orange for forty-five years. I attended Gregory, Roosevelt, and the high school. I'm on the PTA Board of Edison, and I'm the class liaison at Gregory. I just want to say how important it is and how much an influence teachers are in our children's lives. When I was here at the last Board of Ed meeting, I heard one of the teachers read a letter from a teacher in second grade at Gregory, and that she couldn't attend because she was at a part-time job. That makes me sick. Her name is Ms. Balot. I've had all three of my children in her class, and she's a wonderful person, and she's a wonderful teacher as well. My son has a reading disorder. When he was in third grade, she asked me if I... He needed help in the summertime. She offered to come and help him. She didn't hesitate. She didn't say to me that it's her vacation time and that she couldn't do it. She didn't say any of that. I appreciate her, and I think that she is one of the best. These teachers need to be respected, and it's a disgrace that they haven't had a contract for two years. Families are moving into West Orange because of our school system and not out. Sandra, you're the new president, it needs to be a priority for these teachers. This is a disgrace. It really is.[1218.45][1218.45](APPLAUSE).
I appreciate Mr. Robertson's wonderful discussion of the honors programs.
I'm sorry, ma'am, you have to identify yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Elizabeth Redwine. I'm from Ten Cobain Terrace. I used to be Susan Abraham Overlook. I miss her. And Ms. Lab, I really appreciate what you had to say about Betsy DeVos. I'm concerned that Betsy DeVos is not going to be the only way that this election is going to impact our students. Many of our children are very afraid, not just from immigrant families, but children like mine who are very close to immigrant families. I think we need to do a few things. I think we need to have some kind of support for our kids. I think we need to make a pledge, as many other towns have. I just heard about Clifton, I believe, South Brunswick. I can email you examples, that we will not allow our faculty and our administrators to become deputized as ICE enforcers. This is not crazy. This is what Mr. Trump campaigned on and what he has begun to do. So we need to make sure we are proactive here. I also know that, from watching the video, there was... And I wasn't completely clear on this, but the tenor of the meeting that showed the video about reregistration, that I had some concerns about how that might criminalize young immigrant children. So I think we really need to work on this. I also just want to say, it's so late at night, is there some way we can have just a town hall type of meeting where it's just public comment and discussion? We parents have been waiting, you know, many of us work tomorrow. We really appreciate all that you said. We come to these for that, but we also come here to have some kind of exchange. So some kind of town hall would be wonderful. Okay, I have one more minute, I'm just going to make sure, because I have a... I had a couple of details to share. So, yeah, so one thing about the registrations, said there were concerns about residential frauds. This was from the last time, so I just want to make sure this is not a way to pick up undocumented children. I felt like the reregistering was enough vetting. I think there's too much talk about vetting right now, and I'm ready to stop hearing about that. I also heard that... I also just know that the Clifton School District, I just want to read a little bit from an article about their resolution. Their resolution says that the district takes note of, quote, "recent political rhetoric targeting undocumented residents and various immigrant and religious populations in our country." The Board of Education of Clifton and many other of our neighboring towns are doing this, goes on to say that their district will continue to serve all city children, and that their district will not become an agent of law enforcement. So I think it's really incumbent upon us to pass some kind of resolution. I know I speak for many, many parents, and to provide some kind of counseling and support to piggyback on... Tell me your name again, I just met you. What she said about mental health for our students, I think this election has been really tough on a lot of our students, and a lot of people are afraid. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Pac Timman. I live at nineteen Powell Drive. This is my first Board of Ed meeting, and I was quite impressed by a lot of you. I just want to say that teachers are the bedrock of our schools. As you said, Mr. Rutske, teachers are really in the trenches, and I am so upset and so terribly disappointed that the phenomenal teachers of West Orange do not, for the second year, have a contract, that some of them have to work two jobs because their health benefits are cut and... Or their take-home pay is cut due to the raise in health benefits. The teachers are the lifeblood of this community. Please, can we please treat them with the respect that they deserve? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Timman.
Mrs. Freeval? One more time, Sue Freeval, Ten Ridge Avenue. I know Mr. Rutske said that just because replacements for spec ed staff were not on the hire list, that doesn't mean that they weren't being looked for, but it also doesn't mean that they are. For example, there's a special education teacher, Kelly, who's already been out for a week, and I'd like to know if that substitute is a regular substitute, a general ed substitute, or if it's a spec ed certified substitute, because that leave is going on till the end of the school year. And also, while knowledge of IDEA would be a very nice thing in our Secretary of Education, it's a shame that it's not. I would like our board to maybe take a cue from that and take IDA pretty seriously here. You guys are responsible for complying with the federal law here at the local level. We have parents at Kelly, all the parents of students in K through five who receive OT, who are still waiting to hear what's going on. There are makeup sessions involved, there's over eight weeks of OT being missed, supposedly people have been hired, but parents are not getting their updates. And on top of that, this is not an isolated incident. The reason people go through passes is that parents have learned that if a parent goes and asks, and many parents have asked their case managers and gotten non-answers, but when one parent goes and asks, they know from experience that special services will make up sessions only for that parent who knows it's their child's right. Everyone else is left without those missed sessions. These are parents who came through pass because we want all of those students to get their missed services. So we would like an update. No HIPAA violations, we're not asking for individual information, we're asking for an update on the situation itself. And as an aside, we do actually appeal to the state, for the most part, for enforcement. And there's a memo from OSEP that talks about how translating IEPs is, in fact, something that OSEP expects districts to do. So if you'd like a copy of that, I have a hard copy here, or I can email it to you. But last I heard, it is not the practice in our district to be translating either evaluation reports or IEPs for parents. Imagine being a parent who cannot speak English, being told to sign a document you literally cannot read, and then cannot refer to for the rest of the year. So I'd like the board to also take the native language requirement pretty seriously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Cynthia Hadley Bailey, Hickory Row, West Orange. Things never change here. On a light note, I'm the vice president of the West Orange Rotary Club. On May... February twenty-seventh, from six PM to nine PM, the Rotary Club is having what's called "The Taste of the World." And I don't know if any of you have been there before, and I'm happy that we don't have a board meeting, because you normally have a board meeting. February twenty-seventh, you don't have a board meeting, so I expect all of you guys to be there.
I bought my ticket.
As a matter of fact, the Rotary Club is a service organization. My motto is self, service above self. All the proceeds at this event, well, this event, they have samplings of food. We have about maybe forty-five to fifty restaurants that come, and then you could sample all their food. We also have stores, liquor stores are there, you can also sample some of the liquors, which is wonderful. And all the proceeds go to a lot of projects that we have within the town. We have scholarships, that's one of the main things. And with the scholarships, this is not only for West Orange high school students, this is from students throughout West Orange that are graduating. They're all eligible for scholarships, and we give about fifteen, sixteen thousand dollars a year in scholarships, which is great. We also have the service club, the community service awards, and they get money from the Rotary Club. I'm a member of the West Orange African Heritage Organization, and we have a tutoring program, and we won the monies from the Community Service War for our tutoring, which is great. We also give money to Camp Mary Heart. It's a special needs camp up in New Jersey. So it's a good service event, and it's a wonderful program. It's a wonderful night. We have over five hundred people that attend. It's only fifty dollars. So I hope that members of the board and members of the community try to attend the program. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Bailey.
Yes, may I feel for us?
Congratulations on vice president. Nice. I... Thank you.
Good evening. Oh, my God. Good evening. Rosary Morelli, Ralph Road. Cynthia, things changed. They thought I was dead. These meetings are lively. These meetings are lively. They're good, they're real good. You people need to speak up. Tonight I'm here to speak about senior citizens and disabled residents, specifically as it relates to living in an age-friendly community. So why am I here at the Board of Education? Well, because our young people already are helping us age in place with their intergenerational involvement. They visit nursing homes, have a senior prom, do automobile oil changes, and participate in the Real Life for Life. But we need some more help. As the long-serving Chair of the Women's Club Scholarship Committee, I worked to establish a special scholarship for community services. I was always so impressed when I read the scholarship applications and saw what the students do. Most recently, I met three young women who are aggressively working on this year's Real Life for Life. I'm so moved with their passion and their energy. They're exceptional kids. A little history, 2015 White House Conference on Aging Report announced an extraordinary number of new public actions and initiatives across the government to ensure that Americans have increased opportunity and ability to live in retirement with dignity and enjoy full physical, mental, and social well-being. The Surgeon General joined with the YMCA in issuing the challenge to the 850 YMCA associations across the country to host intergenerational physical activity events to promote opportunities for young and older Americans to be active together. The World Health Organization issued a report that cites the essential features of age-friendly cities, which states older people should be recognized by the community for their part as well as their present contributions. Schools provide opportunities to learn about aging and involve older people in school activities. Tonight I'm asking, one statistic I'd like to quote, is in 2050, for the first time in history, there will be more over 65s than 15-year-olds. Baby boomers are getting older. Baby boomers want to age in place and they want to be in age-friendly townships. Tonight I'm asking if you would please consider implementing a service that is season-sensitive. It's for volunteers to shuffle snow for seniors and disabled residents. Now, already in Essex County, but throughout the state and throughout the country, these programs are growing. Milburn has Snow Buddies who are middle school students. Moncler and Livingston have Boy Scouts, and Moncler won a national ALP award for their scouts. As I said, we need more help. I'd be very happy to talk further with anyone who's interested in working on programs that other towns have and that could be implemented here in West Orange. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Morelli.
Good evening, Rob and Israels, 22 Yale Terrace. First, I'd like to say I appreciate the seriousness with which you are treating the honors program. Last month, I stood here and asked for the data and I'm thrilled that there is some. I'd like to know when and how that's going to be made available to the public so we can see. I also had asked about gender breakdowns as well. I hope that the story, the anecdote of my daughter's experience isn't realized in the data. That is my hope. I'm certainly not trying to prove anything, I just want to make sure that our district is in the vision that we all want it to be. My other point is, on January 25th, I emailed Mr. Santiago, the Director of Technology at the Board Office, about a discrepancy in the emails that are still up on the Wobo website and Power School. In Power School, if you click on a teacher, it has their wobo.org address, not westorangeschools.org. Similarly, in the Wobo website, even if we want to click on your names as Board of Ed members, it goes to wobo.org and the board staff. I have not had a response yet from Mr. Santiago, but you can see clearly that parents want to communicate and communicate easily with their teachers, with board staff, and with you, the Board of Education. Please make sure that this is reconciled. I don't know if the emails are being forwarded, perhaps they are, but if they are not, I also think it causes confusion because on the school websites, the specific schools, it has the correct westorangeschools.org. So we have two addresses in two different places. This adds confusion and it's, it's pretty resolvable. This one's an easy one. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Saitz.
Good evening. My name is Tony Fields and I reside at 37 Brookside Road in West Orange. First of all, I'd like to thank all of the board members who responded to my invitation to come out to the Booster Club meeting that we had a few weeks ago. It was very much appreciated for your support. I just want to start by letting you know that during the course of the Booster Club meeting, we had a lot of exchange of ideas that I thought were very, very significant for the betterment of our track team. And in the course of all of that, we had a fundraiser for the track team, in which on Super Bowl Sunday, we were at ShopRite. We had a full staff of kids there, three shifts, six hours. I and my wife and a few other parents were in attendance the entire time, and they had a very successful outcome. They raised about $2,600, despite the fact that there were some people at the Booster Club who had doubt that we would have the ability or the capacity to do that. We proved them wrong. My biggest concern about the track program is that, as I sit here tonight and I listen to the array of accolades across the spectrum of our athletic community, you notice you don't really hear anything about the track team. The reason why you don't hear anything about the track team is because the track team does not have any proper representation. Well, it's my goal and it's my responsibility as a citizen and taxpayer in this town to change that outcome. So here's what I propose to do. I'm going to come to every Board of Ed meeting and I'm going to give you an update when necessary as to the progress of the track or the like thereof. I'm going to point out the obvious flaws that exist in the program and I'm going to let you know what we need to do in order to be able to improve that. And I hope to get the support of everybody here tonight. As you are very much aware, I've had an exchange of emails, including the one that I sent to Mr. Rusty in terms of concerns that I've had. My final statement about it all is that I would like for you to one day be able to say that you are proud of the accolades that the track team has done as well as you do all of the other programs across our campus. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fields.
Hi, I'm Parla Mondrigas. I live at 59 Winding Way. And I want to talk to, go back to the point of the honors program and put it into context of how it affects families. A family, close friend, I wish they were here today to share their story. They just moved back this summer from South Carolina after being away two years. Their son tested cold turkey from the summer, from being out of district, not learning our curriculum, and he was just shy of the grades. And his mother, an educator, asked if they would consider the fact that he had come from an honors program, done really well, had excellent grades, and they did not consider these things and they said, "Sorry, no." Well, fast forward a few months later, now they want him to be in the honors program. There are tons of stories. Another student who passed the test, but she didn't meet the teacher recommendation, so therefore even though she passed the honors test in a subject, she could not participate in the honors program. So the feeling that, that we have as parents is, one, a frustration of being limited. And that causes parents with means and parents who want to have their children perform at a, you know, be challenged to look outside of West Orange, look for scholarships. We have tons of school choice where we live. And my friend, she had just moved, so she wanted to get her kids settled, but that's a taste that was left in her mouth and she's ready to look outside of West Orange. And that's just one parent's story. So to your question, Mr. Schorsbaum, is that it? What percentage do we want for our students to participate in the honors program? If we can get 20%, 30%, 40%, I don't think we should limit it necessarily, you know? I don't think that's necessarily the question that we should be asking. And so, I just want to talk to that. Talk about that.
Hello, my name is Nicole Ruffo for Overlook Avenue. Since the last time I was here, we have had a very large change in our government. And along with this arrival of the new leadership, the citizens have awoken. Our voices will be heard by the school board, by our members of Congress, and by our senators. We are worried for our children and we are worried for our teachers. Fears are mounting due to the inexperience people being assigned new leadership positions in education and new questionable legislat, legislations that's being introduced. Here are just some small list of worries that you would think maybe are fiction but are very real. Taking away teachers' sick days, putting guns in their hands and forcing them to do two jobs at once, a teacher and an armed guard. Freezing or cutting their wages, forcing more and more of them to work in privately-owned charter schools, which would skimp on wages, supplies, class size, and maintenance to maintain a high profit margin. Just on January 23rd, House Bill 610 was introduced, the Choices of Education Act of 2017. And this bill would eliminate the Elementary Education Act of 1965, which is our nation's educational law and provides equal opportunity in education. I could go on a very long list of what all that encompasses. The bill would also abolish a Nutritional Act of 2012, which is a No Hungry Kids Act, which provides nutritional standards for children for breakfast and lunch. So I mean, there's just so many things under the umbrella of this, and I think that you being our, you know, Board of Ed, we have to work together when these things are happening. There has to be an open dialogue of how that's going to affect our school, how that's going to affect our children, how that's going to affect our teachers. And obviously, we need to resolve the teachers' contracts so that they are feeling included in this, because they're going to be brought in to help as well. And my second issue is what Elizabeth Redwine was speaking about, protecting our immigrant communities. Since taking office, the President has signed a series of executive orders, obviously you know, targeting our immigrant community. And one thing that our state governors have the ability is to lobby the government and they can take steps to block the immigration authorities. Some governors in our country have taken that action already, and I believe that we need to work with our governor and pressure our governor to help develop policies to protect our immigrants. And I think also as a school board and as a school district, we need to offer that. It is a very unreal time. I mean, I know our country has been in places like this before, but I've never been in this place as a mother. I have two children currently in the schools and two children who are going to be joining next year. So I ask you, how will we help our people in our community, the children, the teachers? And this is an opportunity for all of us to work together. If progress is not made, I can promise you one thing, we'll be calling you, we'll be emailing you, and we'll be asking you for meetings, and we'll be running for school board positions. Thank you.
Hi, Tony Edelstein, 50 Davie Drive. Two items. I want to be a third voice to urge the board to pass a resolution stating that all students residing in our district are entitled to education regardless of immigration status and that the district will not release students' immigration status. The second item is, I would urge the district to create a policy regarding transgender and gender non-conforming students. Our HIB policy does prohibit harassing conduct, conduct based on gender identification and gender expression, but organizations that deal with these issues recommend a more targeted policy dealing with such issues as access to bathrooms, locker rooms, and use of students' preferred names and pronouns. I did attend some professional development this past weekend, dealing with LGBTQ issues. There is a model policy from the organization Glisten, which deals with these issues, and we could pass that, could pass that along to you as well. But I do urge us to have that policy. Thank you.
John DeRosa, Mangaro. Since May of last year, my colleagues and I, members of the WOEA, have attended these proceedings to make you aware of the conditions under which we are working, to name a few. Form morale, being treated disrespectfully and unprofessionally, being micromanaged, and oh yes, making less money now than in previous years. So instead of repeating what my colleagues had expressed at earlier meetings, I'm going to tell you about some of the members of the WOEA. We are about 100, 1,000 strong. 43% of our tenured administrative assistants have earned a stipend, which means that they have pursued continuing education opportunities to be able to better serve our students, parents, and our district. 43% of our tenured administrative assistants have longevity, which means that they have 15-plus years in West Orange. That's dedication. 75% of our instructional assistants have a bachelor's degree or more. Wow. They have greatly exceeded requirements of the position. So in many cases, there are multiple credentialed staff members in a classroom at a discount rate. That can only be a good thing, not the discount rate part. 50% of our instructional assistants have been with us for 10-plus years, which means that they too are dedicated to the students, the parents, and to our district. Now for the teaching staff. Obviously, 100% of us have at least a bachelor's degree and 85% of us have additional credits. Pretty impressive, I think, until you hear that 72% of us have a master's degree or more. That represents hours upon hours of coursework, which we took on to better ourselves, to better serve our students. This shows beyond a doubt that we are professionals. This shows beyond a doubt that we are capable of making decisions which affect our schools and that we do not need to be micromanaged. 67% of us have worked here at least 10 years and 26 of us have earned longevity, which means that we have been in West Orange at least 15 years. This shows beyond a doubt that we are dedicated to our students, our parents, to our district, and to our town. I am so proud to stand with my dedicated colleagues, members of the WOEA, united and strong. For the sake of students, families, property values, and yes, staff morale, you must settle our contract and settle it now. Thank you.
My name is Jean Torreto. I've been teaching in West Orange for the past 22 years. Mr. Robertson, at a recent meeting, you stated that you'd like to be able to have a part of the meeting devoted to being able to hear from teachers about their concerns. Although I realize the calendar is not a negotiable item as far as the union is concerned, there are three concerns about the posted 2017 district calendar that should be brought to your attention, and hopefully the calendar can be reconsidered. First, the start date for staff. Making us come back from our vacation for one day on Friday, September 1st, so that then the schools could be closed on Tuesday, the day after Labor Day, feels like the board is just sticking it to the teachers because they can. This is a prime example of why we feel disrespected. Either have us come in on Friday and have the kids start on Tuesday, or let the staff start on Tuesday after Labor Day and the kids start on Wednesday. That has always been the practice in West Orange for years and years, except for once in 2010, according to my records, and then this year and last year. Secondly, half-days for PD. Great idea. We've been suggesting that for years to save the district money on subs. The only thing is, the posted calendar has delayed openings for PD rather than early dismissals. This means that there's no before care or breakfast available because neither is available on delayed openings like this morning. However, if the PD took place during an early dismissal, the after-care program is available so childcare would not be an issue for parents. Additionally, for younger children, they're better able to focus in the morning than in the afternoon. So why bring them in late when we could send them home early? And finally, choosing Columbus Day for PD. If the district is going to close for students for one day to allow for staff PD, it should be on Election Day, not Columbus Day. We make little children hide in closets during lockdown drills and then open the doors to the public on Election Day, so anyone that pretends that they're coming in to vote has access to our schools. The cafeteria is closed so they can use it for voting and the children have to eat in their classrooms. After, they've paraded through the cafeteria to buy their lunches, exposing them to everyone that is there to vote. The challengers come into the main buildings to use the bathrooms. They also take up numerous parking spaces that staff members would normally park in, forcing staff members to park on the street in order to go to work. Close the schools on Election Day and keep the children safe by staying home and send the staff members to buildings for PD where there is no voting. There's already been an act of domestic terrorism here in West Orange, when the Livingston 19-year-old boy was murdered on the corner- 19-year-old boy was murdered on the corner of Northfield Avenue and Walker Road in June 2014. So don't think it can't happen here. It already did. I hope you'll reconsider the posted calendar. Thank you.
Welcome to Tuesday Morning. My name's Mark Maniscalco, and I'm the president of the W O E A. So how is morale, you ask? Not good. And why is it so poor? A few items might start to pull back the curtain and reveal the situation. It's poor because our HR department demands that people be called before an administrator to be intimidated and explain absences for illness and death, even where they were already explained and already approved. The unstated assumption in those moments is that the staff members are lying. People feel disrespected and distrusted at their most vulnerable moments. It's poor because in one elementary school, supervisors in central office administration have repeatedly entered classrooms unannounced, without the courtesy of a greeting or an explanation, and then actually rifled through students' desks and teachers' files. They've stayed in classrooms for extended periods and provided the staff with no feedback whatsoever, even when staff members asked for it so that they might improve their craft. In that same school, when these folks reviewed lesson plans, the comments have never been positive, never reinforced excellent practice, but are 100% negative. And most egregiously, since these plans are shared among other teachers, it becomes a public shaming, a demoralizing and completely unnecessary public criticism. To be clear, this is conduct that we would never accept from a teacher if it was directed at a child. It's poor because scheduling the first day of next year on the Friday before Labor Day has been seen by the staff as just another stick in the eye. You're making our lives more difficult for no reason, simply because you can. We have many, many staff members outraged at this, and their complaints ring true because we'll not be in session with or without the students on the Tuesday after Labor Day. It's poor because we've seen the denial of compensation for lost guaranteed prep time, a clear contractual right that was only reversed when arbitration was on the horizon. It's poor because we've been forced to try and arbitrate to reinstate a right that was negotiated decades ago, and which is now forcing new mothers and others to cut child-rearing leaves short. And of course, it's poor because we have no contract. In the past few years, we've seen new people leave because they're unhappy and feel undervalued. We've seen mid-career people give up tenure and their long relationships in town because the atmosphere has degraded so. And we've seen plenty of folks who retired early, who should still be here to give our kids and our system the benefit of their experience and wisdom, because they were so disgusted at the poor morale. Most of these personnel losses have resulted in replacements who are paid much less than those who departed. So the schools lose experienced talent as the board gains money. This money, along with the millions refunded to the staff, excuse me, by the staff to the board, money that appears in our gross pay but is given directly back to the board and drastically reduces net pay, could easily fund a fair settlement. And yet, here we are, almost two years on, with the board enjoying the spigot of money flowing in their direction at the expense of the workers. As morale erodes, we risk a degradation of the system, which can only result in the loss of quality for our schools and students and a loss of property values in our town. We can make the situation better if we work together, but there is a lot of work to do. And right now, we are in trouble. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Let's see. Mrs. Pasqual, I just wanted to let you know, I don't know if you're still here, it's actually one of the board's goals to work on the teachers' contract. Yes. I just wanted to respond to that. Mr. Rucksky?
Okay, I'm going to start backwards.
Yes, please.
Excuse me?
Okay, you're going to start backwards from Mr. Maniscalco?
Yeah. I find it very interesting, Mr. Maniscalco, that you and Ms. Torito bring up the calendar. When I came to you and gave you multiple choices to determine, and you took back to your union leadership and said, "They're not interested in these, you make the decision." So I find it very interesting, because part of my conversation with you was, "This is one of the options," and it was looking at that day before. So again, you know, the door's always open, and you bring up conversations about teachers needing to, they're getting harassed by the HR department. I can tell you that I've had a lot of responses from people that have said, "Thank you. The HR department's helped me in a lot of different ways, a lot of different directions." And that's not a going back and forth right now. The issue is that you talk about the start of school and the calendar, when I gave you multiple days to start off the school year and said, "Let me know what you think of these," and your response was, "The union is not interested in any of those." And I said, "Fine," and we went and moved forward. It's not going to be a going back and forth. You had your time and I have mine. The issue is, again, going through, teachers coming in or administrators coming into a school unannounced, going through students' desks, not saying why they're there. You and I have had the conversation about, "If there's something that you don't think is being respectful to teachers, stop over and see me, call me, let me look into it and see what it is." This is the first time I've heard anything like that. Administrators going in and observing teachers unannounced, I don't have a problem with that. I do that myself. It's not anything about just walking through the building and seeing things, "How you doing? What's going on? What do you need help with?" So for you to come up here, and Ms. Torito to come up here, and obviously, she's not aware that there were days that were provided to you for things to start the day, that was not my original calendar that I gave to the board. It was about five or six revisions into what we started with. Second, Ms. Torito, the half-day for PD on delayed openings, there were multiple complaints from lots of parents that came to this group over here, not only about Election Day, which, again, that was an option that I put on the table, because I understand the seriousness behind Election Day. But the other side of it is, we plan to provide childcare in the morning because of the 90-minute delayed opening to help those parents who need to go to work. It's two times throughout the year, we're looking at different things. It's much more stressful on parents, and believe me, not everybody goes to the after-care program. So to say that we're having a half-day versus a 90-minute is completely different, especially when we plan to help those parents in the morning who really need to have that care so they can go to work. Again, with the Columbus Day for the PD and not the Election Day, that's something that was brought up, and the calendar was created because of that. But again, I'd like to make sure that we're aware that when I have a calendar, before it goes anywhere to anybody else, I have a conversation with the union president to say, "Here's a couple of different options. What do you think?" And when the situation this year was to come back and say, "We're not really pleased with any of these." The issue is, you've got to do what you need to do, and that's unfortunately what took place. Mr. Edelstein will certainly look into the couple of policies that you were mentioning.
Mr. Rucksky, finally. The resolution for immigration that Mr. Edelstein referenced, it's actually federal law, so we have to abide by federal law. We don't discriminate, and we don't divulge ICE information on students. It's federal law. We don't necessarily need a resolution. We have to abide by the law.
Ms. Rodriguez, again, you know, I understand the situation with your friend coming back from South Carolina. There's a lot of individual situations that take place, and that will be one. We obviously work with the individual building and the administrator in that building to make sure that we're evaluating what needs to be done. And that's why we do have the committee get together every year to really look at different things that they hear and different things that maybe need to be looked at in trying to make the program better. Mr. Fields, as far as the track, the Booster Club, I have, since that meeting, been working with a couple of different individuals on the 503C1, and there's a couple of things we're trying to do. We'll have that ready, myself and one of the parents of the Boosters Club, to present some information at the next meeting. So I plan to come to that with that individual who is a parent of that club, and obviously, we want to make sure that we're doing what we can do to look at that. The stats are available. Ms. Sisley, the gender breakdown, I can tell you without specifics, but all but eighth grade, there are more females in the honors program of each of the subjects than there are males until you get to eighth grade, and I think it's fairly split, but we'll have that information available to look at, and we'll also have it in the paper so everybody can have it as well. Ms. Morelli, we will definitely look into your request to help the senior citizens. Obviously, that's something that's very important to everybody, that we are being very respectful to our senior citizens, and so we will definitely be looking into what you have requested. Ms. Bailey will do what we can about getting the word out for the Rotary Club and the Taste of the World, excuse me, at the Mayfair Farms. Ms. Frevold, as far as an update, all of the parents have been updated, and all of the makeups are being done. If you need specific information, feel free to reach out to Ms. Salambino, but all of that information is being done. There's communication happening from different individuals, whether it be supervisors or principals, with the parents, and making sure that all of those issues are taken care of. Let's see here. Ms. Timmons, we agree. Bedrock of the school, absolutely agree. Lifeblood, yes, absolutely agree 100% with that. There's a couple of comments, Ms. Redwine, and I believe it was Mr. Ruffo, that we're mentioning things about protecting our students and our immigrants and things of that nature. There's nobody that disagrees with that. We want to take care of all of our children within the community and all of our, within our district. Ms. Esquali, we, again, we agree that we need to support the teachers, we need to do what's hard. It's a very, very tough job these days. There's a lot of things put on the plate of the teacher, and from days past, that they didn't have to deal with, that they do now. So not having a contract is very challenging, very hard, and there's just a lot of pieces that we need to take care of on that. That's all I've got.
Mr. Rucksky, in reference to the email addresses, Mr. Seisler has had a question. I know I had the same question, but I know our emails are being forwarded.
Yeah.
At what point will that get corrected?
Yeah, it'll be corrected. The issue is, we need to change everything over at the same time. So Ms. Sisley, yes, they are forwarded, so all the W O B O E emails are forwarded to westorangeschools.org to make sure that we're not missing any emails.
Thank you. Do any of my colleagues have any comments? Mrs. Slab?
I'd like to give a question.
Oh, Mr. Slab has one comment.
I also want to thank the Rotary. In addition to everything Cynthia mentioned, every year for decades, they give all of our third-grade students dictionaries each year, and they go into the schools.
Yes, they do.
And we do appreciate that very, very much. Mr. Edelstein, I'll check, is Tony still here? Okay, Tony. Ow, sorry, that hurts. I'll check with school boards. I think they were drafting a transgender policy. We've been waiting for it, so I'll check with Jean over at school boards and see what the status of that is, because that's where we get our policies from, and I fully support having a policy, we have to have that. Just going back to the comments on Columbus Day, this past year, we had a lot of problems with our, or complaints from our parents, because that week, you have Election Day on Tuesday, you have the teachers' conference on Thursday and Friday, and for working parents to have three days in the same week that they have to take care of their kids, it was extremely problematic. And the thought process from the board about Columbus Day is that it is a federal holiday. Many of our parents are actually off that day. And so, again, not to have three days in the first week of, November's a tough month anyway, because you have all the parent-teacher conferences, you have Thanksgiving, it's just a short month, and to have three days off in the first week of November is really, it's a horror show for our parents, there's no other way to put it. So that's where the thought process was regarding Columbus Day. I'm not sure if Ms. Torito was here that day when the board was discussing it, when we had our calendar. And Mr. Field, hi. I really don't know much about sports, and I'll be the first one to say that to you or to anybody, because it's just not my thing. But we look to acknowledge all of our students, and I know it's seasonal, and so I think the cheerleaders go from like September to whenever they go to April. I don't know if track and field is seasonal or not. I certainly know wrestling is a short window, so if you're critiquing the board for not or acknowledging our track students, perhaps it's just because their season hasn't come up yet. I just don't know. I assume there's indoor track?
Winter track.
There's winter track? But again, we had a lot of kids here tonight, because our last meeting, it was snow, and we canceled our students not to come in that evening, and that's why we had so many. But clearly, we will get to the track team, just as we'll get to the baseball team, and all of our students, because we look to celebrate all of our students here in district. So please, don't be upset with the board for not bringing the track team in. We'll get there, I promise you that.
But if you do have accolades and awards, please feel free to come to the board meeting and let us know about them.
Sure, absolutely. I think that's all I have, Sandy.
I just want to add a comment about Election Day. We have been very aggressive over the last few years, trying to make sure our students are safe on Election Day, and we have removed voting from several schools. But we have to work with the county as well as the municipal government too in that process. So we're almost there. I think we have voting out of, what, four or five schools, Mr. Rucksky? I don't know how many schools we have left to go.
Actually, Councilwoman Susan McPartney has been very helpful.
She's been working on it.
In helping us remove that process along, so give kudos where kudos are done, that's for sure.
Yes.
Okay, now, Mr. Schwartzbaum, you have something?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn on Tuesday morning at 12:18.
I second that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Schwartzbaum.
Thanks.
Happy Valentine's Day. Get home safe.